All right.
Well, good morning. Welcome.
Yeah, you better.
It's stressful.
I got it out right here next to my calendar.
All right. Well, I'll call the meeting to order our workshop session and just say welcome to folks. Should be a riveting morning. Discussions. Riveting. Do you want to start or do you?
I'm gonna let you.
I will start and and I will. I've got kind of a a path to get us to somewhere. So as I was going through putting things.
A nice smooth straight path instead of rocky with.
Rocky. Old broken bridges. Yeah, it's like that. So.
That's what I like.
Yeah. The most effective. Um, so as as we were going and and I say we, this is a lot of my material. Jen has helped do some things. We've talked about things, but it's been very difficult to try to get together and try to be on the same page and put a bunch of things together as we have. The auditors are here, you know, I mean, it's it's a pretty busy season. So as we're getting ready to dive off. But I also kind of was going back through and was like, gosh, you know, we started back when we did our budget workshops and we're kind of back to full circle, so to speak, as we're coming back around as we started with two new commissioners, kind of going through some things of what 2021 looked like. Now we're coming all the way through. We've gotten to where we are and now we're having discussions about 2022. So I think it's been a very good thing. I think we've talked through a lot of pieces. I will say from the treasure as the revenue perspective, I am kind of excited to start to deep dive into the departmental pieces because there's a point where we get all the parts and we go, okay, we just got to kind of get into the, you know, cut the pipes and move on into the plumbing project a little bit. So um, one of the things that we talked about the last time we were together was we talked about revenue. Revenue sources. Like I have my own set of handouts, but I thought I missed them all. So Rob went out and did a great job of talking to the to WASAC and they sent out and I believe Rob, I did not make a printed copy of this because I believe you guys have a copy of this and it's on the web. Yeah, and I didn't see a reason to reprint anything. So I am going to reference the document a little bit, but again, okay, that's fine. It's this MRSC. Yeah, it's a great document and honestly, I don't know. I've never, I mean, I've just never.
Thank you.
It is electronic too.
Yeah, it is. And and again, it's like I said, I I, you know, I don't know why I never thought of MRSC for looking into some of this stuff, but I was like, when I got it, I was like, wow.
It was one of the first estimates that I pulled when I started this position, but then I totally.
I don't have, I don't just go out and serve the web. Sorry.
I brought it up in at least two financial committees because I audited her. Our association's finance committee.
Oh, look at you in a binder and every.
This is a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I'm sure that's the last one. Yeah, 2020.
This was my copy. I left Rob's copy.
So you have two documents, one in each place. It's like have a cheater glasses.
To me a couple of months ago.
Perfect. So one of the things I guess and and the top page of the handout is the revenue tools document. I've handed it out before. Like in really rough with some things down the left hand side. We had a discussion the last time we were together and we put things into groupings of things that everybody wanted. I think the one piece as we go through this is there's different ideas. The the board has different thoughts and different folks. So, you know, trying to put out there where we are. So I think the piece that where I was trying to go with this is here are some big budgeting level pieces of here's some tools and here's how much they are. Some of them, you know, just like anything, it's a penny. You're trying to, you know, do something with a small tool. So how big of a tool is it? How little of a tool is it? And how, where does it go? And I did add one of them because I forgot about it until I was going through this handy dandy booklet. But I did add, which hasn't been on the list, the REIT two, which is the second quarter of a percent or the REIT. And I only. Well, let's go down through that here in just a minute. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew I added that one.
So first thing. What are we, what are we charging sales tax right now?
So let's, okay, so perfect. So let's go through the tools. So one of the ones that was on the top was sales tax. Okay. Sales tax, right now, the county is at point a half a percent. So the state sales tax is point six five. And we charge a half a percent. So in the county, you're at seven percent. We budget last year, and I will say I did base my, because I'm a budgeter, I I we budgeted 1.6 million in the budget, but I based my numbers off of 1.5 billion. So basically, if we were to go to the full next ask, which is on page 73 of the document, which talks about the whole piece, we could go in and add up to a half a percent at point one percent increments. So we could add, we could add just point two, we could add point one. So like we could add, so you know, but the 1.5 just breaks down. So the total amount of the sales tax revenue tool is about another 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars. And and I mean, we can argue over the semantics of how close we want to get to, but I just use 1.5. So.
Which would put us at seven and a half percent.
Right, which would put a seven and a half percent, yep, in the county, which would match the three cities, I believe. Yes, they're all.
What is the highest we could go?
That. Well, there's other pieces we can add on. We can add.
Well, no, no, there's others, but they're, the money's tied.
Right. So if you go down. Right. And that's, yes, and that's where you go down through and you can add on additional pieces. As far as getting to another amount above 7.5%, I didn't do a lot of research on that.
And I don't want to. I'm just getting knowledge. Can we do the other pieces without the half percent?
I don't know about that.
I don't know. There is another that we didn't, is not factored. I don't think it would be a huge factor. But right now, because we don't impose the second half a cent, the cities keep all of their half a cent. If we impose ours, they have to revenue share some of their half a cent. So they're with us. So there is actually a little more, a little more than we would get. And there is a, there is a budget impact on the cities as well. No. So what happens is they're seven and a half. They're, they're, they're keeping all one, their one percent, just like we keep our full half percent. But it's set up. So if the county imposes any of its second half, 15% of their second half comes to us. So the city's budget would go down. We would get some of their sales tax. Which if you read your thing, we're always the asterisks that except in Click-Attack County, except in Click-Attack County, because we're the only one that that does not do that. So so as we talk about that tool, if we even are contemplating it, we should probably should have a discussion with our city partners because we are actually they're getting an unintended benefit right now that no other cities in the state of Washington get. So.
So just to add, oh, they're gonna love that.
Right. Yeah, thank you. If you're listening now, I don't see.
So are you going to look into seeing whether we can do the other ones without the half a percent?
Uh, yeah, I have that down. I do have that down.
Yeah, because it's curious.
That would be, I would be curious about that, whether you can. And I was actually just looking on the list really quickly right here to see if it was um, on there and I don't see.
Obviously, nobody's ever done that.
Yeah. Except in Click-Attack County.
But then if you put on like the mental health chemical dependency, does that hit the cities as well?
Yeah, that's what I don't know if that, I think at this point, it's I, my read of it is that the second half is tied to our second half. Those other things are not relevant to each other because it's because it's the the jurisdictions have the local ability to add that other half a cent. And so the revenue share is about that half a cent. And so I don't know, but that's a really good question. So yeah, if you did the one tenth for mental health.
I was just laughing.
Does the cities have to share?
My next question.
I was reading in the man, in the manual, it's clicked that as of 2019, this only applies to Click-Attack County, which has not imposed the second half, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, it's, so we're listed it here a few places.
Yes.
So if we go to seven and a half percent, how many other counties are seven and a half percent?
None. We're still the lowest. The closest one is the Soton, and I think they're at eight.
Seven, eight, 7.8 or something.
Yeah.
So in essence, they've done their full and then they.
And they added some other stuff.
Emergency and the.
Yeah. So we would still have an asterisk, I guess.
But if we added the half plus these other things, then we'd be at them and we could lose our airplane.
Yes.
Before the legislator figures it out and puts.
Yeah.
Well, once we lose it and we gotta make.
So, which is why I put in the 1.5 because, I mean, we can, there's, there's anomalies with sales tax for airplanes or we've paid back other pieces or different things. And so while we're on sales tax, I'd like to kind of bump to the next page. And actually, you you put this in as page two, right?
I did.
So I did provide. So I put in a graph of sales tax.
So the graph of the sales taxes is page three, the
Right.
Data is page two.
And then.
So are those big bumps planes?
I I think they were planes. And then there's a couple of anomalies where we had to pay back. We had the, uh, we had some offsets for some renewable energy pieces. So if you look at the data.
They just.
They just offset our sales tax and I didn't. Yeah, so we got higher than that. And so I took my numbers not out of Kiant, and that's, this is one place where I took my number straight off of the state remnants of what I booked as what we received for sales tax. So mine's the gross of what's in the 626 and what goes to the general because I wanted to look at the whole number of sales tax in general. But remember, we take a portion off and reserve it for the renewable energy part of the sales tax that we're getting. And if we never have to pay that back, that's a number that sits out there. So Jen's in my numbers. I I do not believe it's a huge amount of money. I don't think if we went through, but that is just so we are aware.
What, um, what percentage of these companies come back and ask for that?
So far, most of them have been getting some portion of it. And we are going to have one from the PUD, I think, coming up before the end of the year. I just don't know how.
Have we ever went into negotiating with them like, yeah, go ahead, take your state sales tax, but you're going to cut us a check again for our half a percent?
I I had brought up to the PUD the other day about, you know, that we're, we're booking that and we're having to reduce revenue and it kind of went on deaf ears. So, I mean, yeah, so I mean, you can talk to them. I mean, I brought it up just of that, you know, we've already booked this as revenue and we're having to reduce our revenue to do da, 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 da. And remember that we're all in the same pool and I kind of sung kumbaya a little bit and I, I don't think they were getting my rhythm. Yeah. They got one of the 20 or sub, didn't they get one of the number of allotments of payment? I, they did get some.
They got a big chunk, so they come asking for money again.
That makes that really easy.
Nope, I didn't. I didn't go. And that's part of the thing.
I think off the top of your head that give me an idea.
No.
It's not factual.
No.
One way you could, because we have the totals, I think, for the years. Anything over 1.5, like I think in 19, we were at two, let's see.
And the page two data is something he's probably seen before.
So 2019, we were at 2,42,000. This one. Total sales tax in 19 was basically 2 million. The delta between the 1.5 and the two is the only explanation is. So because it's a, it's a anomaly.
And and with, and back to the paying the renewable piece, we really want to pay them and cut them a check for that rather than them net it from our sales tax. We, that's our final option. We really don't want to do that. That was just in the very beginning when we were trying to work through the solutions with DOR. Because we were kind of one of the first counties to actually.
Go back, I think I wasn't listening. We do or don't want.
We don't want them to net it against sales tax. We want to just write them.
We want to see it and so we can, we know what it is.
Right. And then we, because we really, because we're reserving it, we really want to cut that check out.
Out of that.
And it just is cleaner to do it that way, even though accounting, we can do journal entries, but you know, that's. I I don't have it off the top of my head. I want to say I I didn't, I don't remember. It's 626, too many numbers I can't.
So do they have to come and ask for ours individually or do they ask the state?
They go to the DOR and the DOR sends us a bill and says, you owe us back this much money.
We owe the DOR.
DOR and we pay the DOR.
Not the individual.
No, we don't deal with them at all. It's all cleared to the Department of Revenue. And they do the audit of it and they do everything. So they turn in all this stuff. See, the only reason that we are, the only reason I even have half a clue about this one at the PUD is because we're their treasure. So they need to send cleared checks to the DOR. So they need the canceled checks, which are in my office. See, that's the only way. So I'm trying to use that as an educational thing to understand the other side to be able to go through there. Oh, Jen says 626 cash balances right up 399, 400,000.
I think whenever we have these conversations with these renewable energy companies, we hey, sure, you can ask the state, we'll send a check to the state, but you better send us a check direct.
If you want to be a good community partner, that's part of the thing that you can do. Yeah, it's the state, you know, the states, because the state didn't ask us about.
About taking our.
Our sales tax, the state thought it was a great idea to forgive the sales tax. That's fine on the state's part, but ours, nobody ever even asked us. Maybe we think it's fine, maybe we don't, but nobody ever, they don't ask us, they just take it away.
Yeah, but even if they write us a separate check, I guess they would have to volunteer.
Right. It's all going to be voluntary. They don't have to do any.
But before they hold it and get the permits approved would be a perfect time to announce that part.
Maybe on the third.
You need a meeting in there before that.
So I mean, that's the tool of the sales. I mean, I think that's what we were trying to kind of provide to you guys was however you guys look at it, those would be the increments of where you're at when you're trying to balance the budget. Oh, Jen says there's a piece on 161 Impact Fees Growth Management Act. I didn't read that before, so.
The charge to developers to mitigate the impacts of the infrastructure and capital facilities.
But we're not a, we don't fully plan it or growth management. And so we, that fee is not available.
Yeah.
We can, the only tool we do have, we've never done it before. And I'm going back into the dark recesses is during the SEPA process. That is our, I give there are impacts identified during SEPA. We can then mitigation for that can be you know, dollars or whatever to mitigate one of the impacts that are to county infrastructure or county. Because we, we had this issue back when the wind projects were here on the, we had some impacts on, uh, on the roads that we didn't capture in the first couple of projects. And so that was our ability then was when they came in for the permit, if those impacts were identified during SEPA, then we, because we can't do impact fees because we're not a, we're not a GMA county. And so that is a, that is something to contemplate.
How does that work? Is that something Moshi and?
Well, it would have to be identified during the, during the SEPA, the scoping, the, and it should be. That's why we now have, we do have generally on big projects, we have these road agreements and stuff. So that's really what that is. And so they come in, they're, they're like, you've got to do this to because your project is going to impact.
So we're not collecting it this way. We're just making them handle it on their own.
Or they either have to do the improvement or they have to pay us or pay for the mitigation or generally we want the, whatever the thing is fixed. We don't want money.
And that's what we've done. And sometimes what we've done is, I know on a few of them, we did a, where they pay, they put a an amount of money in an account, like a trust account, because the Gordy said that's 1.2 million dollars. So they did something to secure that. Once they did that, then they got their money back. Yeah. So then if we had to do it.
Go back and do it.
Right. We've done that a couple of times.
In the road, but I think there's other, I mean, if they're identified during the, you know, we've been focused on roads, but it could, there could be other things as well.
Very true. So. And that's the one thing about this list. There are a lot of things out here that, you know, but like you said, if you, some of them apply if you have a growth boundary, you know.
Right.
Different situations and scenarios. So, um, so that is the sales tax. And and the other one that was asked that I didn't look into from the last meeting was the sun setting of whether you could set it out to a period of time and do anything back. I didn't read it in the, when I kind of glanced through the, the sales tax part of it. So I do have that down as another question. So in regards to sales tax, we want to know whether we can do the other pieces without taking the half a cent or that's just a question that, and I think it's an interesting question. Sun setting, listing of all rates by county, because we were talking about whether we'd be the lowest or where everybody else is at. So it'd be nice to know, have a list of what everybody is. And I know it's online. Um, and airplanes, how much are they impacting our sales tax?
Another question I have is this mental health and criminal or chemical dependency sales tax. Is that money got strings on it?
Well, let's go through that one and get, yeah, if you go down to the sheet, that's why we got the book and that's why we're referencing it because I think, and I think the key is, and here's where I'm at. And and kind of to your guys' direction, you guys were like, well, we don't really want to spend a ton of time on some of these if we aren't really, you know what I'm saying? So I kind of tried to, this is kind of the beginning to go, okay, here they are. Let's see where we are like on some of these. I think there's some good questions. We needed that out. So you guys have a little more information. Some of them, I like, I already put a cross line through transportation. We'll get to this one too. I don't think that's what we were talking about when we were having the discussion, but we'll get there and make sure. So if there's something we want to make a deeper dive on, we could do that. But some of them, I didn't really know, you know, is anybody even favorable to that? If the board's like, no, we're not doing that at all, then there's no reason to spend our time. Because I, I think the key is with the budget right now going on and the auditors and everything else. I just think we're, you know, trying to get a bunch of pieces done and we want to bring back good information, but if it's not necessary, we want to. Um, so the next one is criminal justice tax. It's on page 79. The kind of the highlight is it's a one, it's point one percent. Um, and it's the RCW's listed there. I just went, it's a sales tax, uh, it's a basis of sales tax. So I just put in there kind of using the 1.5 million as my half a percent. I just ratcheted them back. So that would be about a $300,000. And again, these are rough numbers. But to give us just an idea of if that's the case, what does that mean to the budgeting process? So that one's on page 79.
There is a revenue split with that one. So the legislature give it and the legislature take away. So this, we have to share with the cities the other way based on per capita.
And I, I didn't see that in there and I didn't put that in the note part of it.
So I think what are we, we're like 60, 40 or 65, 35 population in the incorporated cities, I want to say. Yeah, I think it's like 65% in unincorporated. So that we would have to share 35% of 90% why they do that.
So the 300,000 would be then reduced.
Right.
Right. But also you can look at the cities that use that funds to do things they would like to do.
Yeah.
In that regard.
In the criminal justice.
Think, well, and and in, you know, drug treatment programs and.
And I guess the other piece to look at that too is, and I do, if there is a piece, as Dave was saying, at the half a percent on the regular sales tax where the cities would have to give some money back to the county because that is.
It gives them some of the feel-good projects they might want to take on.
The E911 telephone tax, why didn't we not include anything in there?
Because it's a landline. I'll get to that one when we get there.
Yeah.
I thought you were bouncing around a mental health.
No, no, we're on criminal, we're on criminal justice. So, so that, so my number is 300,000 and you're right. So that would have to be split. So it would only be, you said 65% of that?
Plus of 90%. So my, on 300,000, 205,000 to the county and 95 to the city.
Right. And I'm just thinking there's certain optimistic climate shelter and this money can be used for that. So they might be.
Um, the next one, E9 or emergency communications, E91 sales tax. As regards to emergency communications, I know that there was a, Jeff King is working on an excise tax, which I do not believe this is a sales tax number. I don't believe his is that one. I believe his is the other one. But anyway, this is a sales tax. This is a, can be up to a point two percent. It was at point one percent was just recently. But it does require voter approval the way I read it. I didn't see if there was a split on that one. That's on page 83. And it does have, the revenues must be used solely for the purpose of providing funds, cost associated with financing, design, acquisition, construction, equipping, operating, maintaining, blah, 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 of the communication systems facilities. Yeah. But it would need to go to the voters. And it says, most counties receive 100% of the revenue and do not share the revenues with the cities and the Department of Revenue retains 1% of it. Oh, and that is always, you know, there you have the DOR, they always take their 1% cut.
Not sharing with cities are taking it, right?
The, what's that name?
That you're not required to share with cities, the state will pay.
At least administrative fee, yeah, yeah. Um, so again, I put it on here. We had talked about it. I don't know if we want to go into any more of that to end up, and the 600,000 is the 2.2%. That's the maximum. Yep.
Again, I don't think that would be a hard one to get approved.
Down to the E91 telephone tax that Jake was talking about, that's on page 119. That's an excise type tax. So it's more, so that is a 70 cents per landline phone. So it would come in, and so I don't know exactly.
There's only like three of those left in the calendar.
No, because it goes on VoIP and it goes on another. Wireless also. Yeah, but it's, you, I don't know how it facilitates. I'm assuming it's similar to the 911 and all the other dollars that we get from, you know, prepaid. There's a whole section of revenues that come into that. Because I believe the state gets point two five cents per line or something already. So then.
Should be able to ask them how they're getting and then multiply by, by three. And if we imposed it, that's what we begin.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I didn't, I just didn't. Yeah, I didn't think it would be a huge number, but so you're thinking 160?
I think Greg, that money would go to BMD, I mean, could be spent on.
Yeah, it says it can only be used for.
Yeah, but any money we can send there is less we have to.
We're in the position that we, we fund everything with general purpose dollars generally. And so again, it goes back to if we can offset with, you know, that has to go to that department, then we don't have to put our general purpose dollars into it. We can use it elsewhere. So we, we have a lot more flexibility at most.
Do we put a lot of general purpose dollars into?
Yeah.
127, 135.
We, we shovel money in every number you name. There's, it's like dealing cards, some here, some there, some here.
So I will get that Jake, I will remember in that, in that box.
And in some ways, I mean, if I was the department, I would actually be more comfortable because this dollar, it has to go to that purpose. And right now, it's really at the whim of the board. Like we, we have all departments that, all that general purpose money is completely discretionary. And so exactly, not that we're looking.
New as it comes back.
I just want everyone to understand, we're just looking at tools now.
Yeah, no, that's all.
So that we understand, right?
Well, and I think that's what it is, is to go like with Jake, where he thinks the one's 160 and then the other one's 205. I mean, how much are you gaining? And and I think this is so when we get to the end and we get a budget number in front of us and you're going, okay, we need to come up with X number of dollars. What are the choices to get there? And we, you guys, at least in an open session, have been able to have a discussion about some of these and we can. What are the choices to get there? And we, you guys, at least in an open session, have been able to have a discussion about some of these and we can that, that out a little bit more and then get down to what you guys really think you want to pursue.
And we roughly put about six hundred thousand dollars of landfill dollars into emergency management. Between two funds.
Thing is, is the state nine one one excise tax, we can also get some of that too. So if we impose the full seventy cents, then the state can reimburse us for extra. It's on the.
On the sheet.
Fourth one down.
So you think that, you, you're, you think he won sixty?
One sixty there go.
And how'd you come up with that out of curiosity?
Based on the number of people in the county?
No, 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 that's fine cuz I was, I was thinking, cuz I ha, I get some of that back on the state remit. I have a category. So I was like, gosh. That's one of the reasons why, Mike, I was trying to figure out a way to take a quarter to get back to where these were and back into.
Sometimes the back of the napkin works.
Well, and again, you're just trying to figure out there's close to where it would be. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, mental health and chemical dependency sales tax. So we have a mental health number that we have for property taxes. This would be a sales tax number. This is a point one percent tax, so approximately three hundred thousand. It's on page eighty five. Again, the revenues must be solely for the purpose. So it's like Dave said, they're, they have strings to them. It looked like it was a hundred percent to the county, except for the one percent admin from the D O R.
Do we fund in any definitive way, general purpose dollars into mental health or chemical dependency now?
And I was just gonna say the money that we collect on sales tax for mental health does go all to whoever we've outsourced that to. I can't remember which.
Yeah, or beacon.
Beacon.
Beacon to comprehensive. Well, that's what I'm wondering. Is there a thing that as a category would be, would qualify? That some of, cuz certainly, I mean, I can make the argument that a lot of the work that they do is around mental health. Or services in jail or certain that.
They have the dog on state.
Right. Right. Okay.
We had transportation tax on our shortlist we had done. And then going through the list on here, I did not see a transportation tax. I saw a transportation benefit district tax, which I put a line through because I don't think that that's what we were necessarily referencing. So I, I, I just had in my notes on my other sheets, transportation tax. So I didn't know if anybody had in any of those categories that were in the book, what we were missing one, or if there was one that we didn't see. So.
I thought you had a transportation district.
Transportation district, that's what I saw. Right, and that's what I saw as well. So I was going to strike that from this, but I wanted to, without just deleting it, in case somebody had one or was like, oh, no, it's this or that. I, I wanted to just make sure. So if we need to put something back on there as a different one, that would be fine. Um, so to the question about REIT, this is the other one. Um, we do have a quarter of a percent that we, um, put on REIT for local and that is split fifty fifty between one thirty five and three oh three. The thing that I found interesting when I was trying to put a dollar amount to it is Fund one thirty five estimates that to be three twenty five in their budget and Fund three oh three only estimates it to be two fifty. And they're both splitting the same pocket of money. So the way that works is one percent of that goes to the county general, I believe, as an admin fee or it goes to the treasurer's offices. Uh, at a service fee and then the forty nine point nine percent, forty nine point five percent and forty nine point five percent goes to each one of those funds. So there is a part where you can add the second quarter of a percent. And I believe a lot of counties are doing that. I haven't reached out to any county.
Yeah, there's, there's many, but not all.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think it's all, but I do think it's, I, I think it is common that most people are taking it, but I think there are a few like us. We're not the only asterisk. I think there's several counties that are not taking that. You know, but again, that would be a hard number to budget because right now we've had a lot of REITs come through. But then that number can go back down. Historically, that's not been, you know, I mean, we're still at staggering numbers of REITs being processed. So.
So like if we implemented this, would that, um, take into account like the big S T S though? For real estate?
It, I think it would, yeah. Cuz it would be on all, all sales. And that's why if you go out and you ever look at the D O R site for real estate excise tax, some of them are like one seven, there's a fixed number for the state, but then some of them are more and less and, and we are towards the, mostly because of that quarter of a percent. And, and I believe that, and, and back to the one thirty five and the three oh three. I believe that there's a resolution that states that that's how the money is split out. I believe it's to the board's discretion. You can use the money for capital projects. I mean, there are some strings attached to it, but it doesn't have to go to one thirty five and three oh three. You guys have the ability to do different things with that or put it to all three oh three or do, I think there's some pieces that you guys have on there.
I think that, and something that we would need to look at to see the benefit is how much, I don't know how much general purpose dollars we're funding into those two funds that would be an offset. If it's new revenue to the, that, I mean, there's benefit to that in and of itself, but.
One thirty five is a seven hundred eighty seven of landfill dollars.
Okay, well, that makes it a little easier than.
And if you went to page.
Okay, it really is weird. There's dollars going everywhere.
If you go on to the third page, there is that, there is the allocation. I did include that landfill allocation piece for twenty twenty one. Um, for a different discussion.
Because you could offset the same thing is that there is, there are strings with the REIT that we do.
It's a half a million dollars, I think, five seventy six.
But is that, but I mean, I, 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 I don't wanna mess my cases all up here. What is that?
Three is just a transfer of fifty two thousand for last year. Otherwise, it's only funded by REIT.
Right. So. So the other one though, is that the Downsport wastewater plant? Is that in, what fund is that?
One, one, one thirty five is communications.
Oh.
It's the radio because I think that that's where they, I, I believe that they, sorry, I, I wasn't, yes, I should reference the fund name. One thirty five is.
We don't all know.
No, 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 and I don't either. I just know it's nine one, I just know it goes that bucket. One thirty five is communications and three oh three is capital projects.
Right.
So would the REIT two be eligible to be used on the new building? As a capital project? You're paying down the.
Not if it's put into three oh three.
I don't know. I would have to, cuz you're wanting to pay the debt down with it.
It, it, it's on the capital projects list. It was a capital project.
It was a capital project, but see, like, if you look at three oh three, I think it's funding capital projects. The, I, I would need, that would be, that's not a bad idea. We need to look to see if that we can.
Right.
Because basically.
We have our stuff on capital. You know, capital, you know, the courthouse, the fairgrounds, the, all those things, those are, those are capital assets. The REIT dollars go into that and we can do maintenance and that's, that's actually where the money to do a lot of this stuff comes from is from REIT because we, cuz we've been worried as we look at our project list that's on our capital list and the, up until this last year or two. We had more things on our project list than we had read, you know, we were, the lines were gonna cross. We were gonna run out of money to do everything that we was on our plan to do with only REIT money that we would have to put.
Budgeting at, uh, nearly seventy five thousand dollars less than the other fund that gets half of the other money.
Right.
I mean, you, so.
And we've been using.
No, so we haven't been backfilling. We've been just pulling the fund balance on it, but it's something that we've been watching. So we either have to push the projects out so that the revenues align with the expenditures. Or, but REIT is one of those things that is kinda like this. And so part of what we've been spending is earlier bumps that built up that, that we actually had more coming in than we were spending.
Only putting REIT dollars into.
I, that's the question. I think so. And so if you're gonna get more REIT, we're not really offsetting other, it would just be more money into the fund. So that's, that's a consider, it doesn't really help our, our general budget issues because we're, we're not using those dollars.
Right, correct. This is not, yeah, this, I, I, that is probably a good point.
Right.
It's kinda back to commissioner. It's, it's a, it's a, uh, it's a piece to free up other dollars.
Right, and this wouldn't actually do that. It would just be more dollars.
It would happen with one, with the communication side, though, it would because you're being, you're, you're.
Right, cuz we're five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars.
So it's, it's, it's being split in two places. So on the three oh three fund, yes, on the capital projects, yes.
I guess I would, I would question, um, voter approval for counties under, uh, the G M A.
Right, we, I think we have to have, I think so. I think if I remember.
Maybe that's why.
It is voter approved. If we're, if we're not, I think we actually have to have voter approval.
That, that would be a miss on.
I don't know that we could get.
Right, I. And that would be a miss on my, I didn't see that part and I don't, I was, I didn't, now that you say that, that could be why we don't have.
Why, cuz apparently there was a big hullabaloo.
It's like you said, if you can push it for, you know, we need this money for nine one one kinda things, I think it's a sell.
Yeah.
But, uh, if, oh, we need this to rebuild the fairgrounds, I don't know that it might be another hospital that we'd get shot down.
Right.
So I was just, it was another piece on there that we hadn't had and I thought, oh, I'm gonna add it onto this tools list as another item cuz we don't.
Really the, like, realtors, the, that whole industry is, they're generally really opposed to these.
Yes.
Because it, it, you know, it increases.
So I'll add voter.
Action as far as when you're, I mean, it's already those, I mean, anybody that sold anything recently.
They have their own Zoom.
Yeah, there is on here.
Yeah, he's trying to join and I'm like, I don't think so. I think you're at the wrong place.
Don't wanna start this one. Just, oh man.
No, I think it's.
Wow, that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's.
Unless he has something he wants to say to it. Andrew, are you there?
Yeah. I quit.
No, I, I would like to look into this one a bit more.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz I think there's a big difference with voter approval. If it is, yeah, as you said, making improvements at the fairgrounds and stuff versus communication nine one one. I think that's a possibility if it's, if. And that would kinda check our box of, we're trying to look for tools to fix our, the general purpose, the general fund.
To do something to fix the nine one one.
Right, as far as, so that there's, you know, revenue into that. So. But if that's not possible or what that would be, then it's, it's, I, I agree, it's likely would be a waste of time.
But then again, I think if we're going to do that, we need to understand if we're going to do some other kind of nine one one type levy in the future. I don't wanna burn a bridge before. We need to.
Tell him across it.
Are we admitting him?
Pardon?
Are we gonna admit him?
I think we should, and then I can chat him and tell him, dude, you're on the wrong one.
Okay.
Or you can admit him and then talk to him for a second while we be quiet.
Okay. Hey, Andrew. Can you unmute yourself? Um, you are on the wrong Zoom call. And I did call the planning department to let them know to please give you a call. Cuz there's a whole other number for you to call in on.
Said to actually mute himself.
Uh, you star six to unmute yourself.
There you go.
There. Yeah. Yeah, this is the Zoom that you used last time, but since then, the planning department has their own Zoom call information.
Oh, this is not the, uh, managers hearing?
This is not the hearing. This is actually a commissioner workshop.
Hello, commissioners. Well, I thought we had confirmed this. I am sorry. I will log off and we'll get this straight.
Not a problem.
No problem, sir. Good luck. Thank you. Yeah, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Wish we could be there.
Uh, but I do think one of the other pieces that we do need to look at is probably we should budget in a, uh, one thirty five and three oh three the same.
Yeah, yeah. It is a split.
Well, right, because.
Fifty fifty be different.
If they're doing projects in the three oh three fund and they're going, oh, well, we can only do these projects, but they're getting additional dollars. Doesn't mean they can't. That's just gonna flow into their fund balance and you're getting, it's all, you know, it's not.
Which one's accurate, let's change it both there.
Well, we, they each received four hundred fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty, so.
So they're both gonna move a little bit.
Well, and they, but, but again, we, but budgeted that up. That's again, I, I mean, we, we.
But it just goes into the fund balance.
No, right, but we raised the rate because we knew we were headed up, but we didn't wanna blow it out of the water to get to that number, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a slippery slope, I guess, as we went through there. So I do know that that's why they bumped it up a little bit. So I think we need to make it the same. Um, there was some information in any other questions on REIT other than we need to go down through and look at that. Um, property tax levy lid lift. Um, this was one that was on there. It was at the bottom. We, we stated it at the bottom. I left it on there. There's some information on fifty three. I don't really think it's worthy of going on having it. Yeah, that's what I thought. So I left that on there. Um.
We can draw a line.
Were there other?
Here I am, I'm drawing one.
Um, and a-again, I, I thought this document, and again, I apologize that Heather said multiple times that it's out there. I guess I haven't went out and looked at it or for whichever reason. I thought there was really good information in there. It hit a lot of the high points right out of the, you know, for being able to, without having to dig into the RCWs and some of the things that really brought a lot of stuff to the, to just kinda so you could look at the different pieces. Were there any other items on there in the list that anybody would like to bring? I mean, these were the ones that kinda went along the lines that we had talked about. Are there any additional ones that we've missed that we wanna add on there that were in the table of contents or anything that was on this list that, um, you know, that anybody wanted to bring up before we move on?
Okay.
Um, so the other pieces at the bottom, which I didn't put any numbers to or anything, those are the fees that we talked about. Um, so I kinda started splitting them out into municipal courts has been brought up, EMS fees to the districts for use, um, surplus property and, uh, Gordy, there was some Gordy conversation and I don't remember what it might, and that's what I put on Gordy potential. That's what I wrote it down on my notes. So that's what it is. I don't know what he was doing on. Yes. Um, so those were some of the fees parts. Um, I don't know how we would go, these, I believe, are going to need to be addressed during each in the, in those departments budgets. And I think that's kinda where we're getting to with doing some of these.
Um, well, can we find out, like, say the municipal court, who administers that contract now? Contracts. Cuz they would be the one, is it, is it?
Are you talking about?
The interlocal and I, and this one specifically was actually brought up from, was mentioned by the prosecuting attorney.
That's.
So he would likely have the information as far as, cuz he, he referenced to me specific R C W. But I don't know, again, I don't know if those are renewed annually or they're just, it seems like not, they're just there.
I charge the cities for their portion of the wages for both judges. And that's based on a three-year average of their court cases. And that's billed every year.
Okay.
And it's based on the number of court cases each of those folks have.
And is that set by R C W or is that set by a resolution of the county or is that, do you happen to know that?
You know, I don't know. I will look.
Okay, cuz I think that's what we're trying to understand is where do the numbers come that you're using?
Right.
And can those be modified? Is there a different structure that can be used? Or is that the set structure in the R C W or is that what the legislative body decides that they wanna use? Or how, how do we, how would we go as a, I mean, is that a cap and that's what it is, then that's what it is.
Why, I mean, I got the impression from the prosecutor that there, we have un.
There are money on, there's.
There's money on the table that we are not imposing that we could and it's not, and it's just on a fairness issue that the, the cities are not paying their fair.
It also sounds like one city was paying more than another.
Right, that they're different. Right, that they're different, and they're not, and then he had also raised, um, which would be under the same is. We don't charge, we currently don't charge for probation services for the cities. And why is that? Why is our probation department providing those services to the cities? With the liability that goes with that at no charge? So that's, again, in the in me, you know, if that was a policy decision in the past, it was not a policy decision. I had a discussion about, but it, because I I suspect it likely has been there all, like, we've just never charged for it, and that. And I'm not saying it's a good idea or bad, right, so it's like, no, no, we, you know, those are good services, we can afford it, go ahead. Well, that was a discussion twenty years ago, that's not today. People, you know, people need to be paying their fair share.
And I would agree, agree. Um, EMS fees to the district, is that a?
That's really a Jeff King.
It's really a Jeff King thing, a- and I guess that's a question of how do we, is that something that we want to work on? Is that something we don't want to, is that some, where where, how do we, how do we foresee that coming to? I mean, is it, is it even one that we, I mean, it's, you know, probably not something that you're gonna go, okay, hey, we're gonna figure this out in November of twenty twenty-one. And it's gonna come to fruition in twenty twenty-two. To me, it seems like it's a little bit longer look, as far as not a short-term gain, just in. From looking at the taxing districts and them having to budget and do cer- certain things.
Right.
Is it a discussion with all those? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, where where do we go with that? Because we've talked about it, and I know Jeff's looked at it, is that a workshop in and of itself? Is that a session when he does his budget presentation, that we go through that? How do you foresee that? Um, that happening? The board.
Um, leave for myself, I mean, I would see it as um, something that we would do specifically with the department. So, because we have these now, the discuss, and I believe uh Jeff, um, our last renewals. We did them for short periods because he was letting them know these may change in the future.
Right.
Because the districts were kind of like, why are we not doing five years, or why, well, it's because, I think we only did one or two year extensions. And it was like, because that is something we're gonna be looking at, and so just to kind of set the ground, so again, it's not gonna happen in twenty twenty-two, but I think we need to. Because we want everybody to be able to prepare, or not, if we decide, again, that's a policy discussion for the board to have. Because we, there there's a reason they are what they are now, is because we determined in the past, we don't, you know, a lot of these districts are. They don't, they they really can't afford it, and so we're willing to.
Dustin Conroy, are you trying to get on for the under canvas uh meeting, or are you trying to be here for our uh budget meeting?
I meant to join the under canvas meeting.
Okay, uh, it has a different zoom number, um, and it looks like we're gonna have more people joining.
We might want to reach out to Moshi, get that zoom number so that we can throw it in the chat box.
In the chat box, go here.
I, you got it.
Okay, we'll try to.
Do you have access to that other zoom?
I will go and look for it, this is one that was sent to me, so I'll have to go and see if there's a different one.
Yeah, there was obviously a mistake, so I'm I'm feeling that there's gonna be nine thousand people showing up to testify. That we're gonna have to notify them from here where to go, so we're working on it.
Okay, thanks.
I guess in the interim, you you're, everyone, it's a public meeting, you can, we can get you where to go, you can listen in on the budget discussions.
I might want to throw in the the chat for the people showing up.
Yeah. We're working on it, we're trying to get you to the right zoom meeting, because yeah. I can see at least two.
Showing up with two point five million dollars, you don't really want to stick around.
The one that we're asking for two point five, we might as well go for three or four.
Trying to fix this year and next year.
Okay, so I think I found the right zoom link.
If not, we'll send them to somebody else's zoom and.
Ryan Telvin?
Yeah, I got a whole list of zoom.
Yeah. Well, it looks like, in looking at this, this is from nineteen ninety-three.
Uh, yeah, so I suspect. We can probably tweak it, yeah.
No.
Right. Yeah, so back to the early, I mean, I would see as far as the start, at least the, I mean, do you see an issue with? When we schedule time with Jeff when he comes in to do um his budget, that we just give him a heads up that this is. Because I know he has looked at this.
No, I think he hasn't, I, the other thought that I had is Jen and I could reach out to Jeff and maybe get with him a little bit before and just.
I I put the zoom link on the chat for everybody who joins.
All right.
He found the one, was it like in a later email for later notice?
But I know Jeff was working on this, and I think it was Julie who was working on it, and then Julie's no longer with us, so it kind of got stalled.
Well, I think that would be great if you two.
And I know he, and 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 we, and I've, Jeff has asked for some of the excise numbers for trying to figure out different pieces and and different things, so. A- and since two of these other sales tax ones are, um, we could meet with him just to kind of give him a heads up that we talked with. These are things that are out there too, as far as if that whether he doesn't kind of get, I'm sure he knows, but.
We have, because it would be really helpful to us, if, as you said, we're funding five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of landfill dollars into that fund. If those can be supplanted with other, you know, that are targeted to that, that frees up five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to use.
And also maybe ha- kind of tries to get this to some of the folks that are using the system.
Right.
As we go through and look at, because I know Jeff is gonna be, I know he's talked it, but for about, you know, upgrades and all these other things that are coming down the road. Um, by the way, I will say, not to regress, but at the treasurer's conference, um, there was a. I can't, I, uh, who, Pon- Pondure County, I believe, had to update their radio system. And they actually used the state local pool, or the state, the same financing we used for here, they used that to do the radio project. Um, and they said it really went well, um, from the treasurer's perspective, who knows about everybody else, but from the treasurer's perspective. No, 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 you do, but the point is you have to pay it back, it's not a cash depletion, I mean, you're not funding it all yourself. So, or you're not funding out all your cash reserves.
Right.
Which is, I think, one of the challenges we've based with the radio project that we have, is we've basically funded that.
Yeah, we just.
We've been putting money in there, and we're reducing and reducing it, so, you know, if you did it with a a a, some kind of funding mechanism. You would be paid, that would be a number every year, because I think sometimes in our, and again, as the treasurer later to the game, way after the thing got built. I don't know that we ever really know what a really good number is that we put into the, I mean, I think we estimated and figured out what it is. But I never enough, and I don't think it's big as we think it, I think we always, the number's always smaller than what I think it really was when we funded it. So that's the only piece of doing it that way, is you would be able to get a project, build it, have the number, know what you would be, and be paying that over the course of time. Again, it worked in very, that it it was something that was brought up, and so I was like, okay, I wouldn't bring that back, and it's nothing that we need to start right away, but.
So if we, I mean, we can have the the districts go out there and do the marketing to raise that sales tax. Because it's voter approval, or we can ask them, would you rather do that, or would you rather get the fee, and you have to do your own marketing for when you go up for your. But either way. I don't know. Give it to them in their option, how do you guys want to play?
Yeah. But you are, you know, the.
Your price is going up.
Is gonna go up, and we, you know, we have this system that has to be maintained, and it's gotta be paid for by the, and it really should. Yeah. I don't think it's that big of a deal if it's, I think the voters will be fine with it, if there's a direct, this is what I'm paying for.
If we can explain what it is, why it is, what the future looks like if we don't plan for it now.
Right. Because, you know, and I know that, you know, they did some work on to put into the capital was the maintenance, you know, that's that. Those scary numbers that we're looking out in out years, that, you know, just for scheduled maintenance, we're gonna have to come up with this much, and then this much. Where are, you know, we're already, you know, we're.
We don't have that, so we better plan.
We gotta plan for it.
We might actually have it by the time it's.
Right. So.
Wouldn't be pretty either way.
Yeah, so, yeah, Jeff discussion, and.
Okay.
Need to get moving on it sooner rather than later.
Um, and then surplus property, that's out there as, I I mean, that's just something that's out there as a one-time hit, but it is, you know, it does two things.
But it does help.
It let, gets rid of things that you might be having to to manage and figure out, and just puts it back on the tactical. So it would make it a taxable property, um, and then. I added to the bottom, because it came up in the discussion, oh, because municipal court, so I'm gonna add probation services for the cities as another one. As an outside of municipal courts.
Yeah.
Um, and I will find out who, I'll put a question mark of who does that, um, so that, uh, because, like we said. Obviously, we have the resolution for the municipal courts, but how does the probationary thing work, whether it's an RCW? Um, so, these are the tools that we've talked about, uh, I I think the the um. The the list is comprehensive, I think I wanted to kind of go through next and kind of talk about, um. One thing in going through and putting this together and looking at some of these sources and looking at some of the, I mean, we're, we've been very focused with a lot of different things coming at us lately. Of actual revenues, and probably paying a little more attention to where they're going. For example, like, we have the timber tax, that's a new thing that we're trying to make sure we get it focused. As you're doing that, you're looking at other things. I think one of the things that I wanted to just make sure we went back through, and as we begin the budgeting process. I do believe there's a lot of unbudgeted revenue, um, that is out there, uh, and not necessarily in the general fund. But I think in other funds, there are some unbudgeted revenue.
Nope.
Okay, okay, thought maybe we had more people testify. Um, so.
Unbudgeted revenue or under budgeted?
Nope, unbudgeted, so there's no budget for it, but there is a dollar amount coming into it year over year over year. And so the challenge with that is that we're trying to balance the budget, and we're going, these are the revenue numbers. And these are the expense numbers, but if we know, and and for example.
Revenue we're not counting.
Like, pilt would be one of them. I don't think in the, I, you had went through.
I already gone through it, so it was a total of about four hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars off the top of my head.
Yeah.
And it's mostly um state and federal entitlements related to, like you're saying.
Pills, which those could go away or whatever, but so could all these other things that we're looking at, you know what I'm saying? So if we're not gonna budget one, for some reason, we gotta be careful, and I think, um, so so anyway, I think as we're going through the budgets in some of these. As we're looking at the sheets, that's another half, I mean, and as you're looking at these numbers, that's a real another. Totally aligned on the location to come.
And come workshop time, I intend on having those highlighted for you in your budget books, um, starting with the estimates that. Um, Brenda's working on too, um, so that, so we can bring to light those situations similar to the rate, you know. There's another seventy-five thousand dollars, it's not budgeted.
A hundred percent.
And appears it, so I would, I would throw out a guess of bro, close to six hundred thousand dollars of unfunded.
Or dollars, and the and the other thing is, underfunded, or we are adding landfill dollars in to get that back to a zero bit budget. And then.
And yet there's.
Yeah, they're, they're getting these other dollars, you know what I'm saying? So it it's, it's just a balancing act, and and again, I mean. Budgeting is an art a little bit of trying to figure out, where is it gonna land, and where do we want to be? I mean, we, we can budget really high revenue numbers and really, you know, and and go, but if they're not real, then that, we want to get them as accurate as possible.
Right, but if it's a real number that's a revenue, I want to see it.
Right, yeah. And you will, you'll see the actuals, and I think that's one of the reasons why that the board, it's always been stressed to the departments. To bring the rev, bring the budget sheets that are provided to the commissioners, because those budget sheets have previous year actuals. Current year budget, so on and so forth, and so on there, you can see and compare all those things. If we start to get together, I know for myself, for example, I use a spreadsheet to try to work my budget, then I put it into that format. And then I try to give you guys the information per that Kianta format. Yes, it's not pretty, it's not gorgeous or whatever. But it does have all the numbers on there. If we start moving to another format, and we put that into a spreadsheet, and that number gets left off, because it wasn't budgeted before. And then it's hard to tie all those things back to the Kianta paperwork.
And, you know, yes, like you said, those entitlements could disappear, but, you know, if we've been receiving them consistently for the past five to ten years. There's an average there that would be safe.
Mm-hmm, and I think that's it, and I think there, it just needs to not be zero, I think, because we're not.
Okay, well, it's a little bit.
Yeah, so that is good news, before I move on to the um.
To, before you move on, on the sales tax, and I noticed this before, I'm assuming this year for twenty twenty-one. Why there's no revenue in February and May, it was because they, they, those were the paybacks as far as for.
So this um worksheet was, is one that Glenn put together, and I just went in and updated it for when the money was received within Kianta. So June is two payments, I'm assuming one of them is for May, but I just put when it was received within Kianta.
So that that's a true statement, so that is a, that, yes, we did have, what, which.
But nothing was received in May.
That's why I said, like, if you look at my numbers, my numbers are on what the state remitted to us. Her numbers are on when we did the cash received, so there was a month, which month?
They're showing two months.
There's June.
Double payment, but if March doesn't look like a double payment.
Right. And I think because, when, see, when Glenn was here, Glenn was the one who went in and did all that. And we've started doing the allocation and all the pieces, and I think we had some struggles trying to find our smooth sailing. So we've tried to work through that and try to get them to where we're getting them accounted for in the proper month, but we're not doing a cruel sales tax.
April falls into February. So on uh April, it's two forty-one, but in April is one oh five. So April falls back to February and March, making that all pencil out.
Okay. I'm just looking also at the total, you know, six, so a half a year is is nine hundred, so times two. We should be, we should be meeting our our budget goals.
Yeah, on, and I did include July's because I already have the number, so for mine, I put it, I mean, it's gonna be.
Ours, this one does.
No, that one doesn't, right, a hundred percent, because we haven't booked it into Kianta yet, right? And that's what I was trying, I mean, that's where, you know, as we look at these numbers and levelize them and try to figure that out. That's the, that's the one challenge with where those are coming from. So yes, we are trying to get them mirrored up so that they're in the right months and getting received. I know we had some problems in years past where we wouldn't get the receipt until later, so we had to book the money into suspense, and then book it in the next month. And it shows up as wonky on the trending report.
Okay, any other questions on sales tax?
Um, so I did want to talk through a couple of, just because I have a few things in my budget as we're going through, and I'm going through and. Uh, looking at what to do, um. And so I kind of wanted to, just before I put it in there, I'm like, well, I'm gonna take advantage of today and try to figure out maybe what you guys might think. So, um, one of the things that we budget for is penalties, interest on delinquent penal, uh, delinquent taxes. This is not in the handout, I'm just reading from the paper I brought with me. We have, um, in the past, budgeted about three hundred thousand dollars, which has usually been a little light. Um, but again, we have taken that to where, you know, revenue's low and come in higher. Um, the state has passed resolu- uh, has passed legislation that says that there will be no penalties in twenty twenty-two. Um, so, uh, and we are trying to work through its House Bill fourteen ten, I believe, I can't get them all straight right off the top of my head. Um, and they are working on trying to whittle away our penalties and interest, I think. Um, and so they're gonna allow us to charge interest, the twelve percent per year, which is a one percent per month. Um, but we aren't charging the. Um, but we aren't charging the penalty, which is the three percent in April and the nine percent in October. So there'll be no penalty next year. Um, then the following year, the interest is gonna go down to point seven five percent a month, so whatever that comes out to. So, you know, as we talk about good news about different things like that, then you come to these other pieces where, I mean, this is again, a half a million dollars that's gonna go away. And so, you know, we'll be coming in with what we think is a legitimate number. But we have those equal kinds of things, and I, I, you know, again, I've kind of focused on the revenue side today. But you know, we have other things on the expense side, so as we get to the end of this. Yeah.
What we need is.
And I think that's where we're gonna come from, and I think that's one thing that Jen and I. Kind of even today, trying to put some things together to have good talking points, and I think these are really, really good discussions. I think where we are though is we're to the point where, and Jen and I were talking, and probably me more than Jen. Is it, it will be good to start through the budget process and going through the presentation, so we can start to get some numbers. Put into what departments are going to have, so we can start to work our way through the process of the budgeting. Because we've gone, you know, I mean, we've, I, I'm gonna take these out of mine and they're gonna roll in and all these other pieces are gonna flow and. What is the number? Is it two-five? Is it three? Is it, you know, two? Is it, where, where does it?
Right, right now, we're just a guess, so.
We're just guessing.
I'm aiming high and if it doesn't.
And I understand that, and I agree. I think the challenge from staff's perspective is. We're, we have all these things that are, you know, we're trying to balance and get done, and it's like, okay, we wanna make sure we have all the tools out there. But we, you know, which tool and focusing on, and I think that's why we had good discussion, which tools do we need to focus on? To even be aware of and give more detail on it, we're not. So I guess I wanted to just kind of bring that to your guys' attention. That, you know, there's, there's, as we talk about ways to increase revenue, I think on the flip side of that, we're gonna have revenue that's gonna go.
You remind us, you, you told us about that a couple of months ago.
Yeah, and it's just becoming more and more real all the time. Um, and then the other one that we really are gonna have to look at is we budgeted two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for interest in, in color. And, um, you know, that's, that's. That's not gonna happen. So, you know, right there is, I would say a solid five hundred thousand, um, or, or thereabouts between the two of those. And, and we are in our office looking at other things we can do to try to, um, you know, bolster some of these things. You know, we, last year, we budgeted four point six million on the, on the property taxes. Um, I think we're gonna probably be up to, you know, I haven't really gone through and tried to do the numbers. I think we're gonna be there, so we're gonna get a little bit of gain out of that, but I don't think it's gonna offset some of our losses.
Yes. Uh, nevermind, she just left. There's a lady who signed on.
Oh.
Yeah, I was gonna interrupt and let her know that.
She's like, this is not interesting. This isn't under campus.
I hear the other one's far more interesting.
In fact, I may log in. Let me look at that.
I started thinking about that earlier, but I can get on the two.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm listening, really? Yes.
On the expense side. Coal is that increases. Union contracts, I estimate. Three, seven hundred fifty thousand to a million dollars in new expenses this year.
That's the ray of sunshine? Well, let me scoot aside for the ray of sunshine. I don't wanna get by the shrub.
It didn't land well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at new revenue.
Right.
Do I need to move my numbers to three and a half?
Yeah, so. Lip side of that, um. I think it was last week I came in and said, well, I've, I've found, you know, one million of an issue and. Half of that, or part of that was the unbudgeted revenues or under budgeted revenues. The other part of that is at least for part of this year, part of next year, DRS's rates that have been reduced, that's another. Three hundred thirty thousand, thousand-ish, so that's kind of balancing or offsetting that number that he's probably talking about. But it still doesn't get it, we're just still.
Well, it's status quo, so.
Hole is still the hole. So do we know on the penalties and interest? So in twenty twenty-two. The penalties will go, how much of your, of that, that five hundred? Is in those two different categories?
Three hundred of, of his revenues is in the penalties.
Budgeted, and we've traditionally budgeted that a little low, I think we bring in about four hundred. Yeah. Um, not that.
No, we're guessing, because she will keep you off. Cause I, I like to talk in generality.
I like to know generally.
What, what is it?
Okay, so, this is your estimate, so, uh, penalties, he brought in three forty-seven.
Yeah, so three four, three fifty.
So three hundred fifty, we know in twenty twenty-two is.
It's not gonna go all the way though, because there's a portion, we're, we're not charging the penalty, we understand.
That's why I understand the penalty and the interest part.
Yes.
What's it, together, the number was three forty-seven?
Right, right.
So not the whole three forty-seven.
Correct.
That, what I was trying to get a sense, how much of three forty-seven was?
I haven't gone through and did that. The other problem that we have is, we're also having a software challenge of, and it's not just us. Cause we're in with Thurston County and Yakima County and all folks that are on Ascend, is how it, how are we going to calculate this? To have only one year, because the key is, this is only in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, no, this is.
So the back thing.
Right.
To nothing.
So it's where, it's gonna roll in over time. Right, right. And so it's a portion, but I think it's gonna reduce, so I don't think it's all gonna go. I guess where I was coming with, with my three hundred thousand, my doom and gloom, is because I guess I feel like they're gonna eat it one little bite at a time. And to, to zero, you know what I'm saying? But we already, so we don't, we only book revenue on penalties and interest when they're paid for. We don't do it, we don't, we don't estimate what they are or anything like that. It's like, we're a cash county, so, you know, we, we have lots of them out there, but they are not necessarily. Revenue until they're paid.
Right, but as, but as we look at a sustainable budget into the future. We need to, maybe not in twenty twenty-two, but going out, we need to just basically zero that one.
Right, and so the other problem is gonna be being, you know, like, oh, hey, why do I have to pay penalties and interest in twenty nine or twenty twenty, but I don't have to pay them in. Or twenty twenty-one, I don't have to pay them in twenty twenty-two, and people are gonna be pretty, I mean, that's just gonna become a. It, it's just, it's just sticky. What they've done is they haven't really fixed any problem, they've really created more problems, I think, than they've actually fixed. And, and they.
And they get to say, oh, look what we did.
Right, and, and, and just by the way, the bill passed with zero beat, there, it was one hundred percent.
Well, of course, because it has zero impact on them.
Correct, and that's.
They don't get any of this revenue, right, for them, it's chicken feed, it's nothing, it's a really good talking point. But it's, it's, it's a big deal to the counties where that's a lot of money.
Right.
And they don't care.
Right.
So they get all the, all the good, but none of the bad.
Right.
Send them a bill.
Right. Right, so, um, so as we go through, those are two. You, you know, interest, I don't see interest, interest may come back at some point, I just don't see it resurrecting itself anytime soon. Um, you know, and, and we will, we will be working on that, that's, that's again, not a long-term, that's not a short-term fix either. But, but we'll be looking at.
I'm not even really judging that, because if interest comes back, our expenditures are gonna go up because of that.
Correct.
So it's gonna be a wash, and we'll probably be on the losing end of it.
That's because you think there's inflation, and we're gonna use the tool to fix the inflation, but we may not, we may be in total denial, who knows? Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you, I'm just, you know, yes, pondering it, and, and I think that those are some of the things, I mean, we have a lot of economic pieces that are really struggling. So, so I guess, I, I wasn't trying to, you know, I think Rob kind of hit the nail on the head though. That I think where we are from, you know, trying to, to meet and kind of see where this is all going. Until we can get this budget put into and start to print out the sheets, because I know like. Jen did a great job last week or two weeks ago with her sheet, you know, that was kind of the high-level stuff. But we still, all of us wanna dive into, okay, we're, what, what makes up these couple of numbers and how does this work? And, and that's all in those departmental, um, budgets to where we can really go through them line by line. And try to figure that out and make adjustments to them and figure out un, un, under-budgeted and unbudgeted revenue. Tweak to that and do this, you know, and, and I think we've brought a lot of these pieces out, it's just a matter of how they're going to. Um, get us to where we are, to where the two point five, one point, what, what, whatever, three.
Do you have a budget question that? You would know, you sat here long enough. Looking at, at different departments' budget, when I see a budget that has miscellaneous and has fifty thousand. Why would we have a miscellaneous of fifty thousand? To me, miscellaneous is like petty cash, by grant.
There's a lot of things.
Anything more than that, I, I wanna know what it is though.
So, um, Heather brought you during one of our budget things, the distribution breakdown and how different things fall in that. So, you know, subscriptions, other things fall in those.
But a department can tell you exactly what.
Yes.
That's a really good question, Jerry.
Forty-nine hundred, that, which is miscellaneous. Classified specifically in communications or fuel or.
And I'm telling departments, they need to be prepared to explain those.
Big numbers that don't have an answer, I, I want a sheet or a breakdown of what's in there.
Okay. Um. No, go, no, 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 no.
So, on that cheat sheet I gave you two, it shows you all of the, it has some examples of things that fall into forty-nine hundred, so. It is really a very large.
But you need to, the, you need to ask those questions at the department when you're here, because what they're, what's, one person's putting in there is not. You know, again, you know, it really is petty cash. Let's hope it's not petty cash. It isn't that. Right.
And some, some departments are better about, you know, this is training registrations which fall under forty-nine hundred, so they have it more broken out.
And so that's a descrip, I mean, you could, like, I think we had this discussion, you and I just recently, to where our description says. Forty-nine oh one or whatever, and then we say training, da-da-da-da-da, so we have not just miscellaneous. Because I'm with you, even in my own budget, I'm like, God, why do I have this, you know, I got a three hundred thousand dollar budget and two hundred fifty thousand dollars of miscellaneous.
So we can, we can break them out into more barcodes and it's changing the name on a particular bar code. Simple to do too, if it provides more descriptions, so. That's, that's an option.
It gets really kind of challenging, it likes it, we just, Heather and I just worked through this because I was even.
We're gonna take a slight break. Run down the hall.
Run down the hall, people. Oh, I think it's gonna be perfect.
Looks like it, yeah.
I can give you a nine-foot cord here.
Well, sometimes you need it.
And sometimes, yeah, you gotta have that. I'm pretty sure I was gonna run along when I brought that, cause I was like.
Well, and I would, that's why.
I'm sure it's necessary for the department, they should be able to explain it, they can, but they can explain it.
Yeah, they should be able to.
Or maybe they better be able to, if they're being, they're getting.
But because we don't budget mine, I don't either generally.
You'll never have all of them, I mean, there's some common ones probably that make a lot of sense, but, you know. In IP, we track our budget on smart sheets, so every invoice we pay, they track separately, so. We can hit the print button and it tells what it is, where it went, what it's for, and, you know, so we can say. Here's the list of the eight hundred things we bought.
Tools, yeah, or tools, or, yeah.
So that's probably a long-term thing, but in the short term. Department, since they're gonna bullshit their way out of this process. I mean, commissioners aren't gonna buy their way out of this thing. Jen comes up with a million dollars, I intend to credit you, and I expended a million dollars of employees. And we can't just cut back to last year, we're gonna cut back three years.
Did you make contact with Hillary?
I had not. I'm gonna try and get this.
Why is Q in here?
Because he really doesn't wanna be in the other one.
Yeah.
I would mind listening to the other one.
I thought it was.
The other one, sorry, guys.
It's in the, it's in the chat.
You guys were in session today, okay.
The link's in the chat, so.
Said I might have to go log in.
I know, I'm like. Yeah, so you can do that.
Hey, while we're sitting here, gentlemen, uh, do you wanna come take a look at things? Many counties putting together some.
Oh, yeah.
And signs, oh, so there's this one. If there's any that we'd wanna go in on.
The red one, to me, has too much writing on it, I don't think anybody driving down the road is gonna read it. I like.
But it's red.
I like the red better, but it's just, there's too many words, nobody's gonna read all that.
But, anyway. Tom Land and I have been talking about it for a while. So, do you want me to tell them, the commission, the other two don't love either one?
I, I like them, I don't, I mean, I would.
Said I like the yellow one better, but I'd like it better red.
And the wildfire season. You have to, it has to be pretty, you can't have a lot of information on there, it's gotta be simple, maybe even just a picture. No fire.
Fire, and a circle with a line.
Yeah, a line through it. So, okay. No, yeah, we could.
But less words would be better too.
Okay, we're back, if Jen had our rundown of the hall, some of us actually quite literally.
He's pretty spry.
Okay, so, um. And then the other piece is, and, and again, back, I guess we were talking about penalties and interest in legislation. Um, and, and then I guess the other piece is just, you know, as we are, I know as the Treasure Association, we just had Thursday and Friday. We had met for the first time in forever, in person, which was quite an event in and of itself. We went to the Windrow in Ellensburg and, um, cause it was nice and central and had a meeting, it was great. Um, had high participation, but we all agreed, um, from our perspective, and again, the WASAC Association, I'm sure feels the same. That, you know, we're just continuing to get our revenues attacked all the time through and through and trying to strategize, you know, how do we do that? And I say, our revenues, we recognize they're not the treasures, but we're just, you know, we're all together in the same bucket trying to, to row, so. Um, I, you know, like I've said before, I think there's a P D privileged taxes number that we get that we need to. Continue to make sure that they're not gonna chip away at some of those pieces, um, so that we can continue to get those full ones, because. It seems like it's just a couple thousand here and a couple of that, a couple tens of thousands here and a couple tens of thousands here. Pretty soon, it's real money, so, anyway, um, so going on, uh, along the revenue line. Anyway, so going on along the revenue line. And I, I wanted to take an opportunity, this is kind of off the budgeting part, but just to kind of put us back into. At the, I have talked about the timber, the TAB recalculation from Department of Revenue. And our portion of that is a hundred and forty four thousand, five hundred and forty nine dollars and eighty four cents. We look really good compared to Lewis County, who was at over nine hundred and fifteen thousand. But they're obviously their timber revenue was larger. So we will be reducing our, so for the treasurer's perspective, we are going to go back, we have to go back and recalculate every one of the. Timber receipts back to two thousand, actually, we're gonna go back and recalculate them, figure out what the differences are and where we're at and how we're gonna account for that. I haven't really gotten with Brenda to figure that out, because these are gonna be prior period adjustments in some of them, because these date back to two thousand, the, the beginning of two thousand and nineteen. And I, I guess just because it's fresh on my mind from last week, the treasures are pretty, Department of Revenue, you know, we go back to the one percent they're taking through all of this. They, they really take a lot of money that really just flows through their office and they just take a percent off of everything and they're not doing anything. So just, I guess I'm tossing that out as a, if, for you guys to be aware of, if you're on calls or different things or talking to different legislators that, you know. Really, we're continuing to get hit and hit and hit, so. We are gonna reduce our August payment, I believe, by this amount, and then we'll recalculate where those are at. But you know, if you had a, other Department of Revenue type things that are not their fault, usually it's like, oh, we only go back six months, or you know, we only go back this far, but. This one, they implemented a new system and it's mind boggling that they missed five point one million dollars of admin fees over the course of time in the whole state. And that's kind of a question that the treasures are kind of going, okay, this is, this is crazy, so. So anyway, so we will be working on that and adjusting them, and that impacts all the districts, because that money gets split out for the, for that. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, again, another one of those situations where we're having to, they're not eating their own mistakes. We're, we're picking up the bill for that and giving them one percent, actually, I think this one's a little bit higher. And then the last thing that I have in regards to discussion is. It's a budgeting item and it's kind of bringing us back, I put the landfill allocation sheet in your packet, it's the one that looks like this, it's got the orange bar on the bottom of it. This is the twenty twenty one, again, I take no, this is not my sheet, I think I will be changing it significantly and working with Jen on. Doing something different, I don't, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna be the same information, but it's just kind of hard to read and put into pieces. But essentially, if you go to the deposited amount for quarter two. We have on our budgeted a number, two point two five seven seven oh seven is our, oh, no, that's the wrong one. We have two, three, seven, oh, six seventy seven fifty one. That number is higher than the allocation that we got from the landfill by a hundred and twelve thousand nine seventy. So as we've done, I wanted to bring this to the board as how we were going to adjust this. And that would be, my proposal is to reduce the hundred, or the, on the, up above in the solid waste fees, the second number, the one million eighty two, eight eight, one ten. Is to adjust that, the one twelve out of that to make this balance. And I think that's what we've been doing, which will be a hit to the general fund dollars that we had allocated in there.
So you're a ray of sunshine too?
Yeah, I am.
A lot of sunshine going around.
Yeah.
It's like blackout days.
You're right. So give me, I, I'm not, I'm still not seeing. So the, the million is right here, this number right here, the one oh eight two.
That, that million?
Oh, well, we need to change these up here to twenty one.
Oh, thank you.
Because I was, I was like, why am I looking at twenty, twenty, twenty numbers up here? Like, okay, I was, I was looking for twenty one. I didn't even catch it either, and it's like your clock being off for how many months, hours, weeks after the time zone and you're still on time, because you're going, oh, it's twenty after the wrong hour. Anyway, yes, my bad, yes.
So we had budgeted for two point three seven, and what was the actual number?
Two point, two point two five seven seven oh seven. Two million, two hundred and fifty seven thousand, seven oh seven.
Okay. So a shortfall of a hundred.
A hundred and twelve thousand nine seventy.
Okay, so we have to decide because of our allocate, which. An actual ray of sunshine, that's not as far off as.
It could.
It could have been, because again, these have been very aggressive goals. Because the, if we actually hit our goals. We would, we would have no problem, right?
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree, I mean, it's, it's really not a large number. And I, I just hesitated just taking it upon myself, because I have been bringing these to you guys as we're going through, so that we're. And because I think really unfortunately to rain on that, I think the fourth quarter is gonna be the, where the decisions are gonna need to be made as far as. How we're gonna get to, because I just don't think.
Yeah, because most of it was rolled into the fourth quarter, and that's the one that's on this.
Right, and then I think as.
Three million, a little too excessive.
Right, and I think as we're going through, that's where I hope to sit with Jen and, and try to, as we put this together for twenty twenty two. And, and, and kind of try to keep a similar perspective of it, because it's nice to see it all in one place. That, you know, we can, we can make it a little easier to read and, and maybe have a little different way to split it out or something, but we can do a little work on that. But, but at this point in time, where we are with the landfill is. And again, I gave you what the budget, that was the budget number, so I didn't make any changes to it. So it would, it would move that one oh eight two, eight eight, one ten down to nine sixty nine, nine ten, sixty seven. And, you know, I think kind of back to our conversation circling all the way back to the beginning. With the sales tax, I think that's some of the ideas of trying to free up this money a little bit is, is, is good and trying to be able to use it to do other things. So I guess, does anybody have any concerns or questions with that as we go through and do that? Okay, perfect.
They'll do that.
I don't, we don't have a lot of other categories. There's no other choice.
Well, there's other choices, and you're pissing people off.
But I guess my piece is, we do need to start to think about, I mean, this is the sheet to look at for October, and that's where.
So you might as well fix that now, I mean.
Well, I mean, I.
As long as we know, we're not gonna hit the number it says we're gonna hit.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, could be in as much of a million dollars. So.
If it's only a million, I won't, I will be actually kind of happy.
So, yes, so, no.
Amy is Jake.
Well, bring the same document back.
Looking forward to not being in the middle anymore.
It's sort of.
The camera's been off for half an hour. I'm like, no, it's actually good. See me crying.
So I guess with that, that rounds out the items I have brought to here, to discuss. And. If there's discussion that we want to have about anything we've talked about. I would thank the commissioners, because it's been helpful to have these discussions on the challenging side, though. It is hard to know what you guys exactly are looking for, so trying to piece this together, so I, I mean. I will be honest, and I told this to Jen, I'm really ready for the budget meetings to begin, so we can really start to get into the pieces, because. I feel like we've surfed around the edges a little bit and it's just time to.
I think this is mandatory, because I don't know that we get there without this.
Yeah.
So we have to be prepared for this, but.
And probably what I will do is try to make these changes and list these questions on here and then bring it back to you, so at least you have the document, you can see what the final pieces were and then go from there. And I think really, and I'm talking for myself and I think Jen and everybody as well, I mean. We're, we're, whatever you guys need to make good decisions, I think we want to help get everybody there where that is, and we want to try to provide you guys with the best. Information to, to do a budget, and we understand, I mean, we look at the numbers regularly every day, so we, we see it. And, and you know, where things are going, not that we see anything different, but you know, if you guys want something or whatever, we would be happy, but. I don't know what more pieces we can do to really get us.
Ready.
Ready, because I think we have, and I, I will be honest, I think, I know there's been a lot of time spending here going through things by different people all in this room. That I think have really, I, I, I don't want to, I mean, because there is not lots of rays of sunshine, but I am eager to begin the process, because I guess this is where we are and. You know, as we move forward, we have to go at some point in time, so no better time than the present, but I think we've done a lot of work in trying to. Educate and get everybody up to speed with all the parts and pieces of where the moving parts are, and that will continue, I don't think, I mean, you know, obviously, but. I know for myself, I would offer, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to meet with you on any, you know, call me or, you know, let me know what you want me to bring down. But at this point, I don't know what more we can do to kind of just prepare ourselves for the next couple of months, starting in September. Right, I guess with that.
Are we expecting to see a significant bump in our sales tax receipts due to the landfill that we're gonna have to set aside for?
You know, that's a good question, I haven't really, I, I haven't seen anything significant, I don't think it's real, I think it's really just start, isn't it really just kind of. Getting, I mean, because we gotta remember there's a lag in sales tax receipts, so what we're receiving maybe in July is probably sales tax receipts for previous months of where things are at.
How far, how long is the lag?
I think it's thirty to forty five, thirty to sixty days, depending on what type of tax it is and who the vendor is and so on and so forth. Like if the person self reports or they do different kinds of things, there's a lot of different parts. So like, for example, if the PUD were to, or not the PUD, sorry, that the solar project or somebody were to buy something that didn't have tax on it, then they have to remit it to the state and it has to come. I think some of those take longer than ones that are just remitted from the vendor, but.
And it could be the vendors too, depending on the sides, like, I would, like, I only remit it quarterly.
Right.
And so, you know, and some people are monthly and some people. There's a threshold, now generally, these are big projects, they're probably monthly, I would guess, but there could be some components that there's.
But my thought is, we're gonna see.
Really starting to ramp up.
I was gonna say, he flew over and had pictures, and I was surprised how many panels are already on the ground.
I'm, I, I'm a.
You're showing.
You're gonna show up on time, bro. On time is late and early is on.
I was early. Yeah, I'd like to see.
But yeah, I think you're right, I think it is ramping up, so I do think, and I haven't seen in the last, I did not do the calculation yet for. July, the sales tax number I just got of what would be potentially June, you know, May, June-ish. I haven't seen that our, but I'm expecting that our. Our reserve amount will increase larger than what it's been as we're doing maybe some retooling at different sites or different things like that. So we're gonna try to see if we can catch those and, and put them aside.
We need to have a conversation with the owners. And say, hey, are you guys going to, you know, submit for this, and if so, we need to manage for it.
When do they foresee. Generating energy, what, what?
When they get done?
Commercial operation.
I don't know, I mean, I think we can find what, like, what's in their permit as far.
Because the only reason, I did wonder about that from a sales or from a property tax perspective of how that would fit that number. Because it is a bigger project, that would be.
Yeah, but they're not gonna be assessed until, even if they got that building next month, they're not gonna be assessed until next July. So then it would be on the rolls.
So we're still.
Because we're all waiting, because that's really would be a nice number.
I would imagine those two and this one might actually, the first one over here might actually get assessed by July.
Yeah.
So twenty twenty three is when I'm expecting a revenue hit property tax.
Because I think it goes on commercial operation and then they have to go after that to try to go get the, you know, if it happens.
And if it's on board in August, do you wait until the following year before?
Right, oh, no, no, right, yeah.
So that's the other thing we need to talk about in terms of revenue tools, you know, we're getting closer and closer to session, we need to discuss what we're going to focus on, you know, our prime priorities. To see what we can and cannot get.
Right.
And keep in mind, there's a delay, there, you know, there's a bit instantaneous.
Right, well, and that's the good news for us is, you know, I always keep reiterating, we're not broke, we have all kinds of money, it's, and we have. We just can't have all kinds of money that we don't have to have some discretion now. And in the past, part of the reason is really previous board, you know, in my career here, we've never really had to have. You know, budgeting was easy, it's easy, it, it's really the, the, the debate was about what we were spending our surplus on. That's a complete. Well, yeah. Even that was not, it was not a revenue problem for us, it was. It was a. Because it wasn't really taxed based with, I mean, it was because sales tax rates, you know, was off because of the recession. But that was, again, so much of our revenue was tied to the landfill, that it, we were pretty insulated, we had to, it was.
It didn't hurt us as bad as other countries.
No, it didn't, and so it had, it was, it was uncomfortable, but it was not, we also recognized that it was short term, and then things would go back. We were not, yeah, where it's just gone, where they dumped half their employees and it was permanent. And it's like, we knew it was gonna be short term as far as things would return, this is not, this is systemic now, this is their, this isn't just gonna go away.
We ran out of money two years ago, so from here on out, we have to be careful.
Right, we've hit that ceiling.
I think as departments come in here for their budget and we have to take a sharp impact of things. That, that has never been taken before, I, I, I feel we're gonna get some pushback on some things, so.
So, so welcome to the family. You know, I say.
It's funner.
Yeah, well, it was.
Money to actually do.
Well, and I will say, things were funner in the general, in a general way. You know, five years ago. Or fifteen years ago.
Choose what we do.
Right, so.
So many, so many services you can provide for your dollar.
Right, and so, and I will say, our citizens have not, we've not had this conversation with them, because we never had to.
Which, what a perfect political atmosphere.
Oh, it is, to have this conversation.
Especially right after you built a big.
I know with our shiny new building across the street.
I built that building, if you ask half the people in this community, so.
Well, that's, that's good.
Yeah, two capitals, no. Well, it's hard, it's a, it's a nuanced conversation to have the difference between capital investments. And operational, ongoing operations, those are two different, those are two different things. Like on a capital side, we were in great shape, that's not the problem. But the problem is always, are you gonna consume all of your ability to make capital improvements to support an operational budget? And even then, it won't work and definitely. I know, right there, they don't, I don't understand. Well, okay, you can't.
Sorry, what are you talking about?
If I never replace my roof, because I'm spending, I'm spending the money on my cable bill and my cell phone bill. And my roof is like, wow, it's thirty years old now, and I probably should, I should probably, but I don't do that, eventually the roof fails. And, and I, and it costs way more or.
Have to build a new building.
And I have to build a new building.
You mean like replacing the stairs?
Yeah, and water's leaking and it falls. Yeah, exactly, I think.
With the pop by the records that we're pumping the water out, so the records are.
Yeah, or saying, say, I, again, that's a.
It's an interesting thing, because there's a lot of folks that didn't even know there was a vault underneath on the front steps.
Well, unfortunately, you know, for us, sometimes there's a lot of people that their roofs are failing.
Yeah.
And they still have a key, they're still paying for on demand.
Driving a new car and doing all that stuff. And, and I think that is the one thing, I mean, I, I know that as, you know, people who, I'm being the treasurer, you know, oh, lots of money, but I do kind of try to remind everybody that. You know, the building is really an investment into the community and the county and.
And in the long run, it actually saves us money.
I think, you know, yeah.
That's, that's the, the ticket right there.
And I think once.
Would you rather spend money putting Band-Aids and duct tape on a bunch of ancient old buildings that are full of, or were.
Full of history.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say asbestos. There is, yeah, yes. Yes, get back, well, go ahead, get us back on.
No, no, you're the chair.
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Semi-related. Tuesday, we had a item on the agenda from senior services that was a grant. That I voted yes on, but I'm having buyer's remorse at this point because we don't have a grant committee set up yet. When, can I, can somebody give me a timeline? And when we're gonna have that handled.
I would say that that.
Quit having buyer remorse.
That does somewhat fall on me, I have to step up and say probably that's, I reported to the finance committee and that has been something that I'm like, oh, I'm gonna do tomorrow and tomorrow and tomorrow.
And you're buried in all this other paperwork.
Well, that's fine, but I, I, I appreciate that, so I, I will work on trying to get the emails out to the group and try to get the group, cause. The way we did the last grant committee and the way I envisioned it as the finance committee chair. By default was that I would send out the emails, we'd have a meeting, I would attend and kind of say, hey, this is what we'd like and we'd like for you to come back to the. Committee, once we had that one meeting, then they came back to the finance committee and then it would come all the way through. And it worked and let it go, and that would be at least a start to head down the wrong direction.
Your thinking is the grant committee reports to the finance.
Not reports, it's probably, we were, when we did the last time, and we can do it differently, we had the finance, the, the grant. Subcommittee was providing the information to the finance committee and then we were bringing it to the board, so we could have. A discussion and make sure that it was vetted out so that it, if there was any errors, it was a. Look-see before it became a true public document, I guess, was kind of what we were doing. That doesn't, I mean, it's not, we weren't, they didn't have to, you guys are the ones that could provide the direction. But it was more of a place for to have a discussion about, here's what we see, here's where we're taking. Also, so that then the auditor and the treasurer and the one board can see that document and then go, hey, what about this or what about that? So we could try to make, cause there were several times we added pieces. To those that were maybe left off because they were good questions. That we were able to have and have answers for, you know, when we brought the, the update.
I, I guess my concern is, um. Going there, I was just thinking off the top of my head. You add another step, you're gonna slow things down, delay things farther, how long is it gonna take to get? You know, somebody wants a grant, it finally gets set up a meeting with the grant committee and then it's gotta wait till next one.
I, I don't think that that was, see, that's the difference of where we were at, because we were dealing with really one grant the last time we did this, because we were doing only the big. Cares grant, and I don't think that's the intent of the committee. Uh, or the process, I don't think we're trying to slow it down, I think we're talking more of the reporting of everything. I think as the, as, as a. As discussions that we've had, the grant committee, um, would be able to. Provide feedback to the group that's looking for the grant. Have some sort of a rubric that we've all kind of talked about, that they can try to, to, to vet things out. So that we can get that, and then I don't know that that needs to come, I think it was more for the reporting of the grants. Like, cause I think the other thing is having a quarterly report of the grants that are either in pending status or not, I mean. That was our thoughts, again, we, this could change, I mean, that was just the idea. I don't think the idea was to try to make it and add no more steps, I don't think.
Right, I don't think that was the purpose, but I'm wondering if that's the result.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the result, and I can tell you that from the state audit perspective, having that grant committee for the COVID grant. It's creating nightmares in terms of trying to figure out. Who did this, who did this and why they did it, and where's the documentation?
And just the grant committee or the step of it going to the finance committee?
The step of the grant committee.
Well, and I can add to that, on the other side of it, um, Erin with the S A O. Was really drilling in on how the CARES, C R F funding and grant was communicated to. The rest of the departments countywide and was only pleased. At the point that I said there was a grant committee made up of all of these various. Areas, and that's how the communication got disseminated, so there was that flip side of the positive of it, but yes. That part of it, I mean, she drilled in further and then you get this. That was already happening, but yeah, it was the.
I, I just think with the grant committee, cause I served on that COVID grant committee, we really need to figure out the scope. And the purpose of that committee and not just arbitrarily put. A committee together for the purpose of having a grant committee.
There, that grant committee was, was made up with. Not really somebody to.
They had no leader.
They had no leader.
I would agree with that.
There was no direction.
And I think that, that, the thought was, is that the leader would always become, again, I might be speaking out of turn. But I thought always the leader would become the fiscal director, manager, person in that it would be. Rob or his staff, that per, that, that box.
My, my thought was, she's the manager of this grant.
That's what I always thought.
Reporting to us, the financial liabilities or benefits.
I don't know if it's the last, I think for, for the conversations that we've had before. Um, we're more to try to depict which schedules at sixteen.
Grants, yes.
So, the federal grants and the schedule sixteen that we're putting together is to be able to have that and get it. Not only do it one time a year, is to try to be able to have the, them reported on. Quarterly, so we can see them as they're going and have.
But I think we, I think we want more of the, like that, you're looking at it from your perspective of the work that. You have to do, I mean, we're, no, no, not that you have to do, but that, that's the information that you're looking for. I think the board, I mean, we're interested in that, at least my interpretation, we're, we're looking for is at the beginning at. Is this a good grant, is it?
So that there was some way, and I think that was the purpose of the, I think that was the other part was, so that. Then in the beginning, instead of somebody coming in at three o'clock during open session with new business and saying, hey, this. Exactly, so that then there was a way to say, oh, have you talked to the, but the grant committee? And have you guys, and then having.
See if I can sustain this for three years.
Right, did you have?
Yeah. I think having a grant committee is a good thing, all the reasons we've all talked about, and Heather's right too, it needs to be defined and. And, you know, clear what, what they're gonna do and what they're not gonna do. It could work reporting either the finance committee or the commissioners, but trust me, when this committee starts digging into departments grants. Having the V O C C behind that. Grant committee, or they're digging into their business. Is, is gonna be helpful, whereas if it's the finance committee.
Yeah.
The grant committee may not get the same level of.
That was a lot of the struggle in the beginning.
Right.
That's why I don't.
This is gonna.
Right, it's like, who are you to be? Well, and ultimately, it is the depart, it's the director, so in this case of senior services. They're the, you know, they, Sharon brings her thing in, it's her grant, she's the one that's gonna champion it, it's, it's going to be. And really, she should be the one that knows exactly. The reporting and where all the documents, I mean, they're responsible for it, I see the grant committee is more of a, a resource to. It's like another look at it, not a, oh, we don't think this is, no, you shouldn't do this, it's like. The grant committee doesn't have any say over the grant at all, it's just the technical piece of it to say, to advise the board. You know, this is what.
Here's what I, we think.
Here's what we think, there could be some, the true costs, I know the, you know, obviously the director. As, uh, could potentially have a bias, because it is, I'm getting dollars.
Have a bias.
Right.
For their grant.
For their grant, because it is, you know, obviously they wouldn't even bring it up if they didn't think they wanted to go for it.
To me, I would like it to be grant committee headed there. I personally would rather see it jump the finance committee unless we feel it needs to go there and then straight here.
There's a lot of grants though, having been in that, that you're doing it at the last minute, you're coming up against these times.
That's why you don't want another step.
You're adding another step, it's gonna add a bunch of time, and then you're gonna miss the grant opportunities if you have to go through this other step.
There have been times over this last year, and this, and to be honest, this last year was the first time I really had to focus on grants, that I was getting the information. And it was due in a week.
Right.
Yeah, but aren't those the exceptions? Maybe argue, if you look back, those are the ones that caused the most problems, because it's like, gotta have it, gotta have it, gotta have it.
It never got read through the fine print.
Whereas, they're not all in emergency status or shouldn't be. And I think when the grant committee starts asking questions, we talked about this when you authorized Jen and I to get a list of all the fees and fines that departments pay. Sometimes if it's not got the V O C C behind it, you, you don't get. And the grant committee is gonna be asking a lot of questions, right, what's the, what is the, what's the match? I think you've been asking Sharon, what's the match on a lot of her stuff, I mean.
I'm at the point now where I don't, I don't know that I'll sign yes on another grant.
So I think just the fact they're gonna be asking for all this information in the beginning is gonna push people out of their comfort zone, shouldn't. I think they can handle it appropriately, but, um.
Well, and there's one department that I can tell you will not come to that table unless it is absolutely.
Mandated.
Who's that?
We don't need to know.
I'll give you three guesses and the first two don't count.
So like, I'm going through the like.
That's what I would like to do.
Coming with lots of changes when they come to their budget.
I do see the grant committee when they go through a rubric or when they go through, look at the H R aspects and the pay and the benefits and all the things that come with the grant. They, they may give you information that doesn't put the grant in the same light as the department. Right, we've often talked about sometimes if it's not important, just pay for it, as opposed to get a ten thousand dollar grant, spend the next five years reporting on it.
I, I don't mind the grant committee having the option to run this through the finance committee.
Well, if you don't have, I don't know, I think just the extent of the finance committee, that's where it started, because we never had one, and so. We started doing this in the finance committee two years ago during the COVID, cause we, again, we were, we didn't know what we were. So I mean, yeah, take it, I'm, I.
You guys have enough on your plate that if, if you, you know, if it don't need to be there, you got other things you could be doing.
But I think that the point of the finance committee, or the point, the discussions in the finance committee have been. There would be useful information to bring a different perspective and have all of those rubrics. With that, so the board could make their choice as to whether they may go, you know what, this, this doesn't make any sense, but we're gonna do it anyway, that's your guy, you guys have that. I mean, that's, and that's what we, but yeah, I think taking the finance committee out of the middle of it, it just started there because we were trying to figure out, A, how to deal with. Getting an influx of dollars and deal with all the departments and all the requests, and how was the best way to do it? It, that, I mean, if that was a strike three, then let's move on to the next.
Realize that it was a mistake, we throw it back, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I, yeah, I don't care, what, all I'm really looking for is I want. When the grants come to the board to sign off, that we have the information, the real information. That we, because we routinely get these last minute and it's, the sky is falling, we gotta sign off on this. And it's like, and I'm rolling the dice, it's like, well, it looks okay, but I really don't have time and I just, it just obligated us to.
Twenty-five percent match, and I need five new employees to.
But I have questions on whether I'm purposely being led astray to sign this. I'm not being told all the information, I probably should be told.
That's why you need a third party of the finance committee, and that's their purpose, and that's what we start, I mean, so yeah, having it report to the board. The other thing I would say is there's also reporting part of it too. If it's a three-year grant, I think as the treasurer, from what I see of some of these, it would be interesting to have a look-see at them at year two. And see how they're doing, and are they performing as they were expected in the very beginning, or have they taken on a life of their own, or is there additional dollars? And where is some of that going, because you're seeing a man that very, you know, you're saying at the very beginning, well, where does that go to and is it? You know, what, what, how are each one of those going?
I'll let her go first, okay.
I'm just kind of going back in my mind and. The history of departments, a lot of this management of the grants, it's on the director. Directors used to come in during their time and present that to the board. These are the ramifications, this is what the match is, this is what I'm gonna need to manage this grant. And. Somehow that needs to, that's, you're paying these directors these big bucks to do that.
And I agree, I just don't know that I'm getting a non-biased opinion, what it's coming from.
That's why they need to come in and sit down and, and you guys get to ask them questions. Some departments are still pretty good about that, now a lot of Sharon's are historic, they're ongoing.
And I'm not picking on Sharon. I'm using it because that was the last one I signed on on Tuesday.
When she has a new grant, she does, she'll call and she'll schedule and she comes in.
She'll do it during a workshop.
Right.
Go through all the stuff, but it is, uh, you know, there's.
All departments should do that.
And I do think that the purpose of, and, and kind of where it started in the finance committee was. Because it was nice to, to have a discussion with the auditor and the treasurer and a board individual. Because we were able to have that, you know, like, oh, how are we gonna, where are we gonna code some of this money that's coming in, especially with the cares money? And so it was able for us to have a discussion with the folks who were going to have to be impacted somewhat, so. If the grant committee had a member of Brenda's office or my office or something, so we could keep. Track of that, that would be, because that's what she's saying, is having that other group. It, it, it provides just another perspective of that same grant.
I, I look at the grant committee as hopefully it does have a member of each one of those offices on that committee, it just doesn't need to be the director.
Yeah.
Who's got other things they could be doing. All the records are crossed. So yes, no, I, I would say we started without the finance committee involved. Leave it to my teammates and then we can worry about when we get this thing started. Where we go, let's move.
Well, I think, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I think we can also. Maybe send a memo out to directors that when you have a new, a new grant or an ongoing grant that it's time for the rollover. Maybe you need, you should know when those are coming. Prepare and you need to schedule time with the board to explain, again, you're, let's go back to the beginning. So that we all, just because we've always done it, doesn't, maybe we want, we need to look at those things, we may have, we may have. Cause we, we started things that were, you know, this is a two-year grant, it's, we're gonna do this program, and I will say some of our. Mission creep in departments, that's where they started, they started and then the, the grant at, over time did not. It, you know, was unsustainable, and so then we had to start putting in. You know, picking up the slack and then it became just sort of an expected service and that, and again, as long as we can afford to do that, I don't think we have a lot of stuff out there. That is not good stuff, but I think we have to make, maybe not, it's just like, oh, I have my list right here.
Having to pick what.
Right, but we're gonna have.
I have an example for you, and I don't know who's online about trying to.
Nobody but the auditor.
Okay, so, emergency management, uh, their E M P G S grant, it is very. Minimal, but it requires so much administrative work that. It's not really, I mean, I haven't worked out the details, but I don't, instinctually don't feel like it's a value, whereas if we implemented a.
Right.
Tax and then no longer.
No, no longer reporting and you don't have to manage all that.
Productivity goes up.
Right, and those are the kind of things that we need to look at, that's what I mean, just because we've always done that. And it's, it's like, you don't have to go after every single dollar, every cent, cause sometimes, yeah, I got ten cents, but it costs me a dollar to administer. Why, why am I doing?
Comes with the strings.
So many strings.
Dollar, a grant, but you gotta, your pay is a dollar.
Right.
We're at the point now where we don't have an unlimited source of grant now, so.
Right.
We're gonna have to pick and choose winners and losers there, and we want the best bang for the buck and let's send it through a grant committee.
Well, I go back to the grant, like I, the grant committee, at least my vision of that is more. The technical support for, and the third party, the independent, like, you know, like, I think there's. If everybody's doing the job they're supposed to do, you actually don't really, I don't need a third party, cause the director should tell me the truth. But, well, no, and I do trust my directors, but I think we all have biases that we bring. And it's sometimes you, somebody else has to take a look at it and that's.
There might be value in comparing each grant with the same comparables.
Yeah, yeah.
And sometimes you get that, well, that's the way we've always.
Always done it.
Too, and it's just, you know, we renew it every year, so why would we stop doing?
Right, it's an automatic renewal. It's kind of like I find, I find those hidden keys on one of my credit cards. Pay for services I don't use, what is this?
Separate note and budget problems and, and they're coming.
Don't even own that card, right?
Or collect records request.
Yeah, wouldn't you doubt?
I know that some of the directors are tracking specifically budget. Or hours spent and.
Or hours spent and if you spend over a hundred thousand dollars a year on public records request, you have to report to J L R, so.
Stop doing that.
The entire county or department.
The county spends over a hundred thousand.
How bad is that reporting requirement?
We haven't done it, so.
There's good grant funding, they can help pay for it.
I mean, that would be my question.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you might qualify for state funding to cover your.
A portion of your reporting. Okay.
I kind of take a, I don't wanna throw that out there though, from being on the inside though, that. Are we really fixing a problem or are we just setting one more set of standards on top of? The, the grant programs, which grants are a pain in the butt. You know, you got a, you got staff, you got training, you got all these things, your grants are what keep you funded. You're usually doing them late at night at the last minute because you're doing everything else that matters, especially on the reoccurring grants, you know? And a lot of it's copy paste and there's changes. If you're gonna add, you're, you're pushing this stuff out there to go through a program or, or one more step. Are we creating value and are we making this better or are we just putting one more hurdle that you have to jump through? Where if they're gonna come and sit here during their regular updates and tell us about their grants ahead of time, that's fine for me. I mean, I understood it for the cares app, a huge grant, new program, everything. Regular grants that are every year, um, have the department directors during their budgets update us. Update us during, if they apply for new grants or they're thinking about applying for new grants. But I don't know why you need an entire another group to have another meeting that's either subcommittee or directly under us for something that. Is regular business, so just, I like to throw the other side. Cause I know directors, if they were sitting on here, it would clearly be going, oh my god, another.
Well, I think for, um, that has some weight with, has some merit with me, only, not only, but because part of it, I think on. For me is I'm not doing my job. I mean, part of it is like the informations, they, like, we do get this stuff, I mean, I guess the only thing I would caveat is. As long as I can get the information, don't wait until it's an emergency and I only have, it's an add-on, oh, we have to have this right now. Cause it really, I have no way to really dig into it and look. But, you know, part of it is we just got lazy, cause the information's there. But it requires all this analysis on our part, we're ultimately, we're the decision makers and. So I, I do agree, as I, I would say, new stuff, stuff that's not reoccurring. I think, I think we should raise the bar on new stuff, cause I think that's, I think, cause there, there is always some unintended. You know, there's grant matches, there's administrative oversight, there's all those kind of things and I think we need to look at that.
I mean, grant committee, but only for new grants.
Only for new stuff, I think reoccurring, I agree with Jake, I think a lot of this stuff is. And it's really, it's behooves us, if we have a problem, if we, we should recognize. The issues and we should be the ones that are asking the questions. And if the director can't answer those, then we need to, it, I guess it should be, don't just think it's all automatic now, but since it's reoccurring. I think you better come prepared to talk about your grants and where. How these work, where they started and what is the administrative overhead and if we, based on. That discussion, if we don't feel like our question's got answered or we don't have a clear picture, then. Then we can, you know, ask for some technical advice, but I. Yeah, I think that, yeah, I, I agree with Jake, I think it's some things, we are. I don't know that we're solving a problem, I think we're, it sounds good, it sounds like this would.
I agree, I mean.
Like you, like you use example of senior terms, like you were uncomfortable because you don't real, now you're having remorse because you don't. We did not have the time, we really didn't, we didn't spend any time at all.
I have on that grant, I voted yes, even though I have questions. Because it's just here it is.
Here it is, it's in the agenda.
Going through our busy schedule and I get to that one. So I, I could say I'm fine with the grant committee on only new ones and not recurring, but I think directors need to. Uh, present us with their information. Uh, before it's on the agenda.
And that would be, and during the budget process, when they come in to do their thing, be, be prepared to.
Let's talk grant, let's talk so that you're ready. All right. We know, we've only got half of it fixed, are we doing finance committee portion of this or not?
No, I think it can come out directly to the board.
So with the grant anyway, now you're in with that. And we're gonna move forward on arranging members of the grant committee.
Go ahead.
I'm just, no, I'm good, that's, that's good discussion. I think that's. Again, we didn't have, I mean, we were done with what we had, so it was open to questions.
At this point, as long as that took and as much discussion, I'm afraid to bring up the second one.
Okay, but what is it?
Where are we at with Kianta?
Oh, finance.
Or should I bring this up next meeting?
So I've been looking for, because I got one from the Kentsap County, I haven't had a chance to read it. I'm bonding with Google Sheets, um, once I get through it, then I plan on sending that out, setting up a new steering committee. But I was successful in getting one. So for an example for us to look at.
So what do we need?
How many choices are, how many choices are there for a new Kianta? There's a whole bunch of.
Yeah, we looked at, in the finance committee, we kind of looked and there was.
We looked at, I think, four or five, and I think there's more than that if you really opened up the search.
Different, many different softwares and on their webpage, they have a. Big list.
There's some pretty common ones.
Yeah, there, there was, I think there was, there was three for sure.
Yeah, well, and I think, I, I think it will be, at least from the, at least my perspective. It's a little different conversation now, as far as the, you know, if we are. Gonna hold to our, we think that's a really good use of the, you know, CARES Act dollars that we receive, or the. Yeah, sorry, other.
Rescue.
Rescue, the rescue dollars, which we actually have, that they have been deposited, cause you know, really the board. We don't use, we don't use the financial system, we don't, we're not the users, our, you know, from my perspective, our piece vote was always gonna be, how are we gonna pay for it? And how are we gonna get it implemented? Well, the, how are we gonna pay for it? That, it's like, our work is done.
Really affect us because again, it comes down to productivity.
Well, yes, but I'm going to, why, I'm, I'm not saying I don't wanna be part of that, I'm just saying. I don't have a whole lot to add as far as on the technical. The users, the, you know, that. Let's just go do it.
But I don't think that the issue with Kianta is the technical piece, I think the issue are, with the system. It goes back to the processes and all the parts that are with it. And I think as being part of the finance steering committee and sitting there through the meetings, that is one of the parts that we recognize is going to be significant. We could go out and go get another software tomorrow and we could put our junk into that same thing and have more junk. And that is the problem, that it is process, 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 that is what's gonna take. And that what, has what's taken all these other counties that much time to go in because. These systems like Kianta are twenty-some years old and so much has changed with. Time and attendance, like Brenda's saying, and integrating something like that and integrating these other different tools and doing business differently than we used to. Even though we're still following the same R C Ws that have probably been around since nineteen, early, you know, whatever, it's, it's a process driven.
I'm just, and, and I, you gotta give me a little bit of time because I'm from private sector. If it's broken, it's broke for too long, you're bankrupt. Um, it's hard for me to. Sometimes understand or fathom the, the speed of which things get done or don't get done. Um, I mean, we were kind of on board with this in February, how much farther are we from where we were in February to getting this done? Uh, it's, it's, to me, it's from private sector, it's not moving fast enough.
It's about these processes, you don't have to wait till you pick a software to start working on these processes. We basically for seven, eight months been talking about process and everyone goes, yeah, yeah, it's all bad.
I say, I, I don't timelines, I mean, I, I wanna see things moving.
We're never gonna have a time where we're not busy.
I know, and everybody's busy and I understand that, it's just.
And we said he would put together a draft R F P if we had a sample for him to work from. I did receive a sample this week, I haven't had an opportunity to look at it, so.
Just keeping it on everybody's plate.
Do we do it our way or do we look at the state auditors, how do they wanna see the information and then work backwards? To do it that way, opposed to making it our way and then we're converting things and changing things and. You know, cause softwares are all basically gonna be the same, right? They're all.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's gonna like the change because it's learning new things and it's gonna be messy and. It is what it is, but it, you know, doesn't mean it doesn't be done.
I mean, we have things in our own system right now that we have chosen not to fix, which is the admin process of Kianta. And we've talked about that for a really long time. And, and we brought it forward and talked about it and done nothing, so. I mean, you know, it's not the new system, I mean, this, I think, I worry a little bit that we all go, well, we need this new system and that's great, but. It's not gonna fix everything, the, the fight is gonna happen once the system gets there going through the processes. And, and, and I, and I mean.
But it's gonna be a long fight, so.
Or, or not, it depends on how long they just will, right, I mean, I think that's kind of the, the piece, but, but I, I, I mean, I think. It's every day on all of our minds because we're all, I mean, I, I know it's on mine and I'm sure on. Brenda's and I'm sure on Rob's and everybody that uses Kianta. But, you know, like I've said before, I mean, I said this two years ago before we did the H R upgrade, I said, you know, we should really just buy the thing off the shelf and. Implement into that, but nobody wanted to do that, we're gonna go look for a new system, that's fine, they all have GL packages, our GL packages, they cut checks the same, it's how your processes. Integrating to that, and I shouldn't say they're all the same, I, there are differences, but fundamentally. No, but fundamentally, cutting a check is cutting a check, you gotta. There and you do that, but it's processes that build up to that that are gonna be the battle.
Okay, that's your last one. One on my list of making people angry.
Yes, sir.
One of my thoughts is that you're right, it, it comes down to the processes, software, software, there's some that we can look at. Hopefully we get enough, everybody's gonna be pitching what they do, there has to be some sort of consultants out there. Who will find the right process or the right software that can integrate all of our old data. That we could use that would save us time, effort and money by having a consultant give us the right thing that will work with all of our stuff.
That's what I got the R F P for, from Kentsap, and I just haven't, and they picked it back off the park.
But is the R F P for a consultant or the R F P for the software?
Consultants, I believe, I haven't had a chance to dig into it, I asked for, when I talked to the auditor, Paul told me they had one for a consultant.
Okay, I thought you were talking.
No, cause we need a consultant to even get the R F P for the software.
So how are we, I don't wanna beat on this too much, cause, but. How are we going to enforce the process changes when, or is the new system going to? Cause I, I, I'm with you, I would rather us get the cons, you know, get our consultant, we pick the right thing. And then we adapt our processes to the system, rather than try to make the system work for the way we do. It's like, well, no, we always do it this way and I, I know they want us to do this.
And we have a policy from this board, that this is the way it's gonna be done.
Well, that, and we're gonna have to update board policies, like, you know, the electronic records policy or not, or the electronic signature, so we have our own county codes that we have.
And everybody's gonna have to use the system, not try to use something else to, you know, and then, yeah.
Then you can all blame it on me, that's fine, you can tell them man made it happen, I don't mind being manager.
Yes, moving on.
So I have one, while we were sitting here talking about all the negative things, and, and I'm pretty much done, I have enough, but I did come up with one, um, one item that I thought I would share. Yesterday I did, um, receive in eighty-nine thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. For criminal justice and law enforcement one-time charge per, uh. Oh, let's see, Senate Bill five zero nine two on page eleven hundred, section forty. Thirty million dollars was a portion from the state to each county based upon their population size. I have no idea, it just showed up in every treasure in the state, we all mentioned to everybody like, hey, what is this? And we finally got down to that and nobody told anybody and yeah, just, it's a wonderful. Could be.
So that we can pay back people wrong.
But it's a one-time, it's a one-time fee.
Yeah, I think that is what that is.
Well, we haven't proceeded it in because we'll have to. We had to, um, we had to put it in and most, most, uh, counties are just putting it into non-departmental.
I mean, you might check the prosecutor.
I sent an email, here's the deal, I sent an email to the treasurer or to the sheriff, the prosecutor, the clerk. And I heard from one person, so if we wanna give it to that person, good, it was the clerk. Nobody else. It's mine, I'll take it. Yeah, there's, they've updated the bars manual with the code for it, so, um, yeah, so we can add another bar. Yeah, I will, I, I wanted to get it all straightened out before I send an email, but there is good news and money does sometimes come our way. Well, hey, it is what it is. So, other.
No, I'm at a good news for you too.
Yes, sir.
Are you two joining Jake and I to meet the contractor over there to live?
For, what, what is? Oh, that's right.
I got nothing better to do, so I'll be there.
No, I'll be there. Thanks for the reminder.
Anything else for the? The good of the order, the good of the county, good as my mental health.
I was gonna say, we might need to do these in the afternoon so I don't send everybody back to work pissed off.
We got work to do.
I wish I could do half of this work for you, I would.
Firing them up and giving them, as Heather says, energized so that you can go just kill it when you get back to work.
Well, I think we would have. We have a competing. And I have never figured out, you, I don't think you can actually, you can't do two Zoom simultaneously. Well, two, but on a single device. I have never been able to do it.
Well, you might be able to do one through an app and one through a website.
Yeah, I mean, I could have, I could have, yeah.
Well, but you, cause you can phone into Zoom, I believe you can have both pictures up and if you're listening to one through the computer. And call into the other one. Why would you want to?
I wanna see, I wanna, I wanna check out. News examiner's cavalier technique. Well, that's. I'm, I'm whittling, sharpening. Yes, any, if there's nothing else, then I.
I will take my Kianta committee and grant committee notes.
Well, then I will accept the motion to adjourn. Uh, to adjourn the regular meeting, all those in favor, so off.